Good morning and welcome to City Hall. We'll get started with the invocation and our pledge of allegiance. Greg Giltner is the chaplain of the Oklahoma City Police Department. He'll lead us in the invocation, and then afterwards I'll ask Councilman Pat Ryan to lead us in the pledge of allegiance. But everyone, please stand.
Would you present me, please? Heavenly Father, we thank you so much for the blessings of the day. We thank you so much for the life-giving rain. Father, at this time, we just ask a special blessing upon this council. We thank you for their leadership. We're thankful for their guidance. We're thankful for their wisdom. We just pray that your Spirit be within this room today as they conduct business of this great city. It's through the name of your Son we pray. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for Each month, the Rotary Club of Oklahoma City helps us select one outstanding teacher in the city of Oklahoma City from all 24 districts that we represent, and we honor her or him with a Teacher of the Month award. And today's winner is Shara Steinhoff from the Putnam City School District. Shara, you want to come up? Caroline, why don't you come up, too? We have a resolution. I'll ask the clerk to read it as we get settled.
Whereas Shara Steinhoff has been named Teacher of the Month by the Rotary Club of Oklahoma City for February 2012. Whereas Mrs. Steinhoff taught 4th grade for 14 years and now teaches enrichment classes in the gifted and talented programs at Will Rogers and James L. Dennis Elementary Schools. Whereas Ms. Steinhoff has earned National Board Certification and was recognized as a Putnam City Foundation Excellent Educator in 2007. Mrs. Steinhoff uses her knowledge of children and instructional practices to go above and beyond in presenting interactive motivating lessons. She creates a safe, positive environment where students know they are loved, respected, and successful. Whereas Mrs. Steinhoff believes students learn best when learning is hands-on. When her students learn the difference between igneous sedimentary and metamorphic rocks, they receive a rock collecting case and become rock hounds. They weigh, measure, and test their rocks. Whereas Mrs. Steinhoff applies her technological skills as she instructs her students to create PowerPoint presentations on states' presidents and student autobiographies. Mrs. Steinhoff cares about her students unconditionally, which maximizes their potential. She believes in them. Teaching is her passion and a habit of the heart. Now therefore, be it resolved by the mayor and council of the city of Oklahoma City that they do hereby recognize and commend Shara Steinhoff on her selection as February 2012 Teacher of the Month by the Rotary Club of Oklahoma City.
Now comes the suspense of seeing if we can pass this resolution this morning. We have a motion and a second. If you'll look up there, all the lights are green. Congratulations. Let's show our appreciation.
Thank you for this honor. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Congratulations. Thanks, Caroline. We appreciate the Rotary Club and the Putnam City District very much. We also this morning are remembering a young woman who has disappeared from us much too soon. I'll ask the family of Safari McDoolit to come up. Y'all come up and McDoolit, come on up and, Brian? Everybody that's here to support Safari, come forward. We do have a letter of condolence. I'll ask the clerk to read it as we get settled.
Whereas Safari Belay McDoolit was born in Oklahoma City to John and Patricia, Ms. Patty McDoolit, on September 23, 1975, and passed away on February 20, 2012. Whereas Safari graduated from U.S. Grant High School in 1994 and from Florida Atlantic University with a Bachelor of Arts in Sociology with a minor in Women's and Minority Studies. Whereas since 2010, Safari served as Community Relations Director for Oklahoma County District 2, and she was an outstanding public servant, reaching out to civic groups, businesses, community organizations, and neighborhood associations to maintain a close grassroots relationship between these groups and local government. Whereas Safari also served as the director of the successful Shine for Students program, encouraging young people of high school and college age to engage in community service and volunteerism. And during its first year, the program logged some 100,000 hours of community service. Whereas Safari was preceded in death by her father and brother, Chess Tanner, and whereas Safari is survived by her mother, Ms. Patty, fiancee Cory Sines, and his children, Tori, Trevor, and Kyle; sister Cinnamon and husband Mike Scully; brother Race and his wife Summer; brother Jade and his wife Jennifer; and by a host of other adoring relatives and extended family and many, many friends. Now therefore, the mayor and council of the city of Oklahoma City do hereby extend their deepest sympathies to the family and friends of Safari McDoolit.
Certainly, she was making a great impression on us here at Oklahoma City, and we know she was very much appreciated over across the street at the county, too. We really appreciate, and we're sorry you've gone through, but we enjoyed having her around very much.
Thank you very much. I appreciate everyone who's helped to make this possible, this resolution, and all the city and county workers. I can't tell you how much I appreciate all the volunteer work that they've done and how they've helped my baby make this a better world.
Let's show our appreciation to the family and what she did for us.
Are we going to do a motion? Do we need a motion? We don't. Well, I just want to comment that I didn't know her until the last couple of years, but I have not, I've not met anyone that I can recall in some 30-plus years of public service that I've been involved in that made a bigger impact in a shorter period of time than Safari. She was just absolutely essential to a number of things that I've been involved in that other, another, at least one other councilman has been very extensively involved in. Can you hear me now? I just can't express how much I appreciate what she was, especially to South Oklahoma City. Her contributions are priceless, and they'll live on, I know, because she started things and was involved in the real beginning of things that are going to carry on forever. She just, and just a beautiful person inside and out, just, words can't really express. I thought Brian did a great job at the service, but I know he would share with you that words just really can't express the loss that we've experienced with her. She just was absolutely wonderful, and I appreciate. You must have, you did a great job. I don't know about the rest of your kids, but you did a great job with her, I'll tell you. She's wonderful, really.
I'd like to echo Pete's comments. I had the pleasure of working with Safari as well, and she was just lovely. And after Saturday, I feel like I really got to know her so much better. So, thank you for, and Brian, you did do a wonderful job, as did everybody. So, it was a lovely service. She was great.
We are on item four of the council agenda. It's the Journal of Council Proceedings. Item 4A is to receive the Journal of Council Proceedings for February 21st, and item 4B is to approve the Journal of Council Proceedings for February 14th. We have a motion and a second. Any comments or questions on the Journal? All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item five is request for uncontested continuance.
Mayor, there's a couple this morning. There's two listed in your, in your agenda, item 8B and item 8C. And item 8C is listed as a deferral until May 1st, and that's a cell tower in Ward 6. And subsequent to the posting of the agenda, the applicant has now requested that that item be stricken. So that's item 8C on page 15 of your agenda. We're asking that that be stricken. And then item 8D1, also on page 15, S.P.U.D. 639. The applicant requested a deferral on that item until March 6th, so one week from today. Again, that's 8D1, S.P.U.D. 639, defer that for one week. And then moving to page 16, under item 8G1A, 2712 Northeast 16th, we ask that be stricken. The owner is removed. And then moving on to 8H1, item B, 5225 Brookdale Drive, we ask that be stricken. The owner has secured. Item D, 1401 West Park, we ask that be stricken. The owner has secured. Item G, 1329 Northeast 7th Street, we ask that be stricken. The owner has secured. And item L, 2344 Northwest 16th Street, we ask that be stricken. And again, the owner has secured.
Any other requests for uncontested continuances? Or assess the council meeting convened as the Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority? It's like there are four items. All right? Comments or questions on the MFA? All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Adjourn the OC MFA convened as the Oklahoma City Public Property Authority, one item. Comments or questions on the PPA? All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Or adjourn the OC PPA convened as the Oklahoma City Environmental Assistance Trust, two items. We have a motion and a second on the EAT. Any comments or questions here? All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Adjourn the OCEAT and reconvene the council meeting with the consent docket. We have a motion and a second. Is there any individual consideration?
Mayor, I just wanted to mention 6J if I could.
J, all right. Your Honor, item P on page 6P, all right.
And then Mayor, why don't we get a chance? Bob Palmkill, our city treasurer, is here, and he's going to talk to us for just a minute
All right. Meg, you want to go ahead and talk about item J?
Yes, very briefly. This is Oklahoma Avenue. We've completed the two-way conversion from a one-way street, but I really wanted to thank the staff. They went the extra mile after some conversations and added a bike lane to that stretch, and it really helps serve as a great connector for people that are biking downtown. And it looks like it's working really well, and so I just wanted to express my appreciation to the staff for listening, number one, and seeing that it was accomplished. It's a skinny street, and it was a little tight. We had to push the curbs back a little bit, but it's wonderful, so thank you very much.
David, item P.
Just wanted to mention that we're working with Cleveland County on joint projects that will benefit both Ward 3, Ward 4, and Ward 5. And in Ward 5 especially, 80% of my area is in Cleveland County, and we really appreciate the efforts from Cleveland County to assist us in some of these resurfacing projects.
Mayor, item U is in agreement with several auditors, third-party auditors, to help us with sales tax collections. And we've been working with the Tax Commission for, I don't know, it seems like six, seven years to get these, so literally, it's been a number of years to get these third-party audit contracts approved through the Tax Commission and on boards. Bob, you want to tell us about that a little bit? You can correct me on the timeframe, too, if you'd like.
Okay. Good morning, Mayor and Council. I've been asked to brief you this morning on the independent audit program. This is a program that allows municipalities to augment audits that are currently performed by the Oklahoma Tax Commission for sales and use tax. Allows us to either use our own in-house staff, or we have the option of hiring an outside auditor. The early version of the program, there's actually an early version of the program, was initiated in 2001. Oklahoma City did participate in that program. It was fairly successful, but we did encounter some, what I would call, technical difficulties with the structure of the program. A couple of these were the designation of the auditors as former agents of the Tax Commission. Also, the Tax Commission brought up some concerns that they had where there were audits that were being performed that would affect multiple cities, whereas, of course, the Tax Commission has the responsibility to audit for all cities. So they were, they wanted to ensure that during the process that all cities were given the opportunity to participate in these audits, and I don't know that that was, they felt that was clearly outlined in the original program. In 2010, Oklahoma City, in conjunction with the Municipal League, initiated some legislation to hopefully resolve some of the issues with the earlier program. As a result of the legislation, auditors now are required to be trained by the Tax Commission, be approved by the Tax Commission, and eventually, they are certified as agents of the Tax Commission. They are, at that point in time, given access to the Tax Commission's records, reporting, but they're also required to maintain the confidentiality of that information. The Tax Commission's concern about their liability for auditing for all cities was also addressed through just some new procedures. What we're doing now is, just as an example, say, Oklahoma City wanted to audit a company that may also have a location in Edmond. We're now required, as Oklahoma City, to contact the city of Edmond, should that occur, and give them the opportunity to participate in the audit that we're proposing. Now, should the city of Edmond, in my example, decide that they don't want to participate, they may have to provide something in writing to the Oklahoma Tax Commission to let them know we're declining the participation in this audit. That relieves the Tax Commission of that liability that they have with the city of Edmond in that particular situation. We also added some language to address the actual assessments that would occur as a result of these audits that we would be performing. We wanted to add a stipulation that anything that would be derived from these, the audits that we're performing, would not be subject to the 1% fee that the Tax Commission usually withholds for their services. Of course, the Tax Commission will continue to be involved in the entire process. The city will perform the audits, of course, will pay for the audits. We'll also put together the findings, submit those to the Tax Commission. The Tax Commission will then be responsible for reviewing and approving those findings, making the actual assessments to the taxpayers, and eventually, collecting the taxes themselves. One of the questions that I get asked pretty regularly in regard to the independent audit program is, why are we paying for something that the Tax Commission should be doing for us anyway? And there are several reasons. One being is that the Tax Commission, just like any entity, has on occasion issues with resources. They may not be able to give to everything that we would like them to, to address. Also, when the Tax Commission is selecting their audits, they're usually trying to get the most bang for their buck. They want to audit, you know, those companies or those issues that will have the most impact on the most cities. They do audit in cases where we request a certain audit specific to Oklahoma City. However, it's something that they have to fit into their schedule and into their, using their resources. Sometimes this takes a little longer than we hoped that it would. We also feel that we, as a city, have more awareness of where our compliance issues reside. We know where we have problem taxpayers. We want to get out there and help them get those issues addressed. And one last benefit, I guess, to the program that could be received by the city would be just having the program out there within a community, you know, by word of mouth, folks are going to be aware that the city is out there auditing for its sales tax, and that in itself tends to increase compliance overall. The city's audit program, as I've mentioned, we did participate in the earlier version of the audit program, and at that point in time, we achieved roughly a 6 to 1 cost-benefit ratio. So obviously, the program can pay for itself. At this point in time, the, what you have before you this morning are contracts with three audit firms that we want to be able to do business with. These are all the firms that have been approved by the Oklahoma Tax Commission at this point in time, and this will allow us to, should we elect to do so, participate in audits that are being proposed by other cities. Now, our focus with the audit program is not just to go out and do random audits. As I've mentioned, we're very aware of where our compliance issues are. We know which taxpayers are having problems. Our intent is to educate our taxpayers, to get out there, to make them aware, you know, that there is a problem, and hopefully, assist them in getting those problems resolved. Our intent is to keep small problems from becoming big problems for our taxpayers. As we move forward in the program, the Treasurer's Office will be responsible for administering the program, and certainly, as I've mentioned before, any audits that are going to be performed as a result of this program will require our approval. In most cases, we'll be proposing the audits ourselves, but in all cases, we'll be approving the audits. Some of the large audits, the audits of the big mega-companies, we probably won't be doing. Those are very cost prohibitive, of course, but also, it's those cases that we would eventually just coordinate with the Oklahoma Tax Commission. We would contact them if we see certain issues with a certain large company, and we would let the Tax Commission perform that audit. As we move forward with the audit program, certainly, we expect to continue to revise our procedures. We'll want to monitor the performance of the program to ensure that we are achieving that cost-benefit where, you know, the program can maintain itself. And certainly, we'll also be tracking the results of the program, the assessments that come about as a result of these audits, to ensure that the Tax Commission isn't withholding that 1% fee. That's an overview of the program, and I'd certainly be happy to take any questions, if you have any.
Has this been a primary, a sales tax audit?
These are sales and use tax audits.
And use tax. Have you identified, and you don't have to say their names, but identified any potential large abusers of the use tax process?
We have suspicions as to where we think we have specific problems, and those are certainly the areas that we'll address as, you know, as we initiate the audit program.
Thank you.
David?
Thank you, Your Honor. I met with Bob and Craig. This is an issue that I think is very deserving, and I don't know these firms that they've identified, but normally, they tend to focus on these. They become specialists, and often, they'll work both sides of the street, meaning they'll work for the municipalities and states to pursue additional revenues, but then they also work with clients to identify situations where they may have overpaid taxes in some instances. So they, they are very, usually very good, very well-qualified, and I think, as Bob mentioned, they can be very effective. We get a very large return. Now, I struggle with commending this type of work, because often, we're on the other side, working against these types of audits, but I've received concerns or comments from both clients, as well as just general contractors out there, and there's at least a perception, especially with respect to out-of-state contractors, that there may be an unfair advantage if they're not paying the appropriate use tax on materials and other components of contracts. So I think it's great. I think it'll help give our contractors within the city and the state confidence that everyone's playing on a level playing field and no one's got, has an advantage. So I appreciate the city going through this process, and I think we'll be better off as a result of that, so, thank you.
Is this only use tax, or are we going to be doing sales tax also?
Sales tax and use tax.
Okay. You know, both of these things, they have the potential for raising substantial amounts of money, I think, but I think underlying all that, there's a fundamental fairness piece to it, that if people are operating, I always worry about when I go into a restaurant and they don't ring my sale up. I mean, I always think, why wouldn't you do that? You'd need to keep track of how much the sales are. It always, if they don't offer to hand me a receipt, and I think they're competing with a business right down the street that does that very thing. You pay it, you get a receipt, and you pay it, and it's got the self-tax printed on it. So the fact that it will generate money makes it nice, but I think there's a fairness issue that has, that goes to every businessman that sells at retail in the city, that we owe it to them to make sure that, if they're paying taxes, to make sure their competitors are also paying taxes also.
Any other comments or questions?
Mayor, if I could, just one more thing. There are a couple of items here at the end, X, Y, Z, and then double A, that all relate to MAPS III projects, and I think it's important to note what great progress we're making. It may not seem like it. Things are coming at it. Things are coming out of the ground and yet, but we are identifying locations for things, the Whitewater facility, as an example, and we've approved the method that we're going to decide on sidewalks and trails, and so we really are, each of these committees is really working very hard.
Actually, I think last week, there were eight action items on MAPS items, so there are a lot of things coming along.
Right, thanks. Way to vote the consent docket.
Your Honor?
Yes?
Can I just make a comment? I meant to, earlier, and, David, thank you for mentioning item P. We share Ward Five and Ward Three, a common boundary, I-44. Southwest 119th on item P, which is a cooperative effort to resurface that with Cleveland County, will benefit the residents of Ward Five who use that area park very frequently. It will also benefit our soccer people coming in for outside tournaments, and it will benefit the neighbors to the west to do that. And I'd just like to pass along to Eric Winger and to Dennis Crowe, as my appreciation for the way they put this together. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thanks, Larry. Any other comments or questions on anything listed in the consent docket? All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Move on to the concurrence docket.
Mayor, there is a posting, an air on the item Y. It's listed in the agenda, original agenda, $7,500, and it should be $7,250. So there's an air, it needs to be noted, in item Y.
Okay. We have a motion and a second on the concurrence docket. Any other comments or questions? All right, let's vote. Passed unanimously. On to item eight. These are items that require a separate vote. We start with a series of zoning cases. The first is in Ward Three. The address is 7300 West I-40 Service Road. It's currently an R-1 single-family residential district, and it would become an I-2 moderate and scenic river overlay district. Larry?
Yes, I think the applicant is present. I think this merits just a brief explanation, and then we'll go from there.
Okay.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. David Box, 522 Call Core Drive. Our reason for an application today is to permit a billboard to be moved. My client, Mr. Wayne Knoll, owns the property located here along I-40, and this is just west of Rockwell. The shaded, the highlighted orange section is the property that we're discussing today. This star, the yellow star, represents a previously existing billboard that was removed to permit a service road. If you're familiar with the area, there's a Kenworth trucking operation right at the corner of I-40 and Rockwell, and Mr. Knoll built the service road to permit more development west of the Kenworth trucking operation. So what we're seeking to do is take away this billboard and move it 200 feet to the west and 135 feet further off of the highway. Now, this is in the scenic river overlay district, so we met with Mr. Pat Downs, and he had no problem with it. Planning Commission recommended approval, and there was no protest, and we seek your approval.
Thank you, David. Mr. Counsel has any questions? I move for approval.
All right, comments or questions on this issue? All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. On item eight, A-2, it's a zoning case in Ward Eight at 11901 North Morvern Road. It is R1 single-family rural residential, and it would become an R1 limited office district. Pat?
Thank you, Your Honor. This was heard by the Planning Commission. There were no protests. It was a unanimous vote. Now, this area is an area that already has an industrial facility out there. This is an expansion for the office space. The owner is represented here by Mr. Box. If there are any questions, we can ask Mr. Box to address those. If there are no questions, I would move for approval of this.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on item eight, A-2. Are there any questions or comments on this item? All right, cast your votes. It passed unanimously.
Thank you.
All right, we have a motion on the emergency. We have a second. All right, cast your votes on the emergency.
Let me ask a question. What is an emergency?
And that meets our definition of emergency? I guess our definition is if they want it, we give it to them? Right up there? Hmm? Okay.
Cast your votes on the emergency, and it passes unanimously.
Thank you.
On to item eight, A-3. It's a zoning case in Ward Three at 4701 and 4801 West Reno Avenue. It's currently R1 single-family residential. It would become I-2 moderate industrial. Pete? I'm sorry, Larry?
Thank you, Your Honor. Would the applicant like to come forward and make a... Okay. This particular plot of land is an area which is, however it got R1 years ago, I don't know, but it's never going to be built with a house. A distribution facility is an ideal use for this. The Planning Commission approved it. There's no one to object, is there, Francis? I'd like to move for approval.
We have a motion and a second. We're voting on item eight, A-3. Are there any comments or questions? All right, cast your votes, and it passes unanimously. Item eight, A-4, is a zoning case in Ward Four. The address is 2326 Southeast 59th Street. It's R1 single-family residential. It would become R2 medium-low density residential. Pete?
Is there anyone here to speak in opposition to it? I've looked at it, and it appears to be all right. It was approved by the Planning Commission. I move approval.
All right, we're voting on item eight, A-4. Cast your votes.
Excuse me one second. The easement has been submitted, has it not? That's a note on, on your... I'm sorry, I should have said that earlier.
The applicant was supposed to bring the easement with him this morning. Didn't want to give it until it was approved.
Okay. You want to make your motion subject to the easement being submitted?
I was going to say, is that a yes? Yeah, I amend my motion to, subject to the easement being received. I'm not sure that's legal. We can do that, though, isn't it?
Oh, we tried. All right.
You can defer it.
Leave it to the lawyer to tell me when I do something illegal.
Well, it's my thought, but...
Well, let's wait and see. Is easement submitted yet? Is the applicant here?
I think we should defer this a week.
I would defer it a week.
Let's do that, yeah. That's right. Well, I understood him to say he wasn't going to give it to us until we approved it. Deferring it a week's not going to change his mind, evidently. I don't know. Or maybe it will if we defer it.
That's what he says?
Did you make the comment that he was, he said he wasn't going to give us the easement until it got approved?
He would bring the easement with him to the council hearing, that he did not want to give it to our hands until you voted to approve the item.
But he's not here.
But he can't do that. He's not here, no.
Yeah. Well, he needs to show up with it. I move that we defer it one week.
All right, we have a second on the deferral. All right, voting on the item to defer this item one week. Cast your votes. Item is deferred. Item eight, A-5, is in Ward Seven. The address is 16400 Northwestern Avenue. It's a planned unit development, and it would become a simplified planned unit development. Skip?
I haven't received any opposition to this, and I would recommend that we pass it. I've reviewed it, and I have no objections to it.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. We're voting on item eight, A-5. Any comments or questions on this issue? All right, cast your votes. It passed unanimously. On item eight, A-6, we're back in Ward Seven at 2729 Northeast 24th Street. It's R1 single-family residential and R2 medium-low residential, and it would become a simplified planning at development. Skip?
Yes, this is an application by Bethlehem Star Baptist Church, and I've spoken with the pastor, Reverend Payne, on several occasions and referenced this, and it's been recommended by the Planning Commission. The church owns several lots surrounding the church, and it's only to develop a parking lot for the continued development of the church. And so I would recommend that we approve this, and I received a call from the pastor, and he asked that if they could get the emergency on this also.
All right, do we have a second on the motion?
Second.
We're voting on item eight, A-6. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Want to make a motion on the emergency?
Motion to pass this with emergency.
All right, comments or questions on the emergency? All right, cast your votes. The emergency passed unanimously. Item eight, A-7, is in Ward Six at 1308 Northwest 16th Street. It's R1 single-family residential and an urban conservation district, and it would become a new simplified planned unit development. Meg?
Thank you, Mayor. This property is located on the south side of the street in the Plaza District, and is it currently not zoned to be a fourplex? Is that the problem?
That's correct. It was built and has been maintained as a fourplex, but the zoning was, there was a blanket zoning change years ago that made the dwelling non-conforming, and so this will put it back into conforming zoning so they can get financing on it.
Perfect. And we have also, they've agreed to the technical evaluations?
Yes.
Okay. No, and no protests on this item. Move approval, please.
All right, we have a motion and a second on item eight, A-7. Any comments or questions on this item? All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item eight, B, has been deferred until March 13th. Item eight, C, has been stricken. Item eight, D, is a series of two items that have been recommended for denial by the Planning Commission. Item eight, D-1, is in Ward Seven. It's a cell tower issue. Skip?
Well, I understand that this is, if I understood, it was continued to...
Just only been deferred? What is the new date?
One week.
One week, okay. Item eight, D-1, has been deferred until March 6th. Thank you.
Can I ask a question in reference to the deferral? If the residents ask for the deferral, does this affect the timeframe in reference to this matter getting heard for the council?
Yes, it would affect, unless the applicant agrees that that will extend the time period to review the application. If this is a non-co-location application, so you have 150 days under the FCC rule...
Okay.
...to review it, but it would count against that 150 days.
But if the applicant agreed to the continuance, if they were... Do you have any objections to the continuance?
It's not clear, but they really, the applicant really should say that they agree that this extends our time period to review the application.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Item eight, D-2, is a planning case in Ward Two. The address is 2909 Northwest 70th Street. It's a simplified planning development, and it would be moving into a different simplified planning development if passed. Ed?
Who's here? I see Meg, but is...
We do have one person that has signed up to speak.
Is the leasing here?
Laura, are you Laura? Laura has signed up to speak.
Okay, great. Well, I do have a question. One problem was that this, this idea, we got into, the owner of the building building this 30-foot-high sign, and we just can't do that. We've talked about the problems on May Avenue. We can't have situations where we're building higher and higher signs to try and get up over everybody else's signs. That was one of the primary objections of the Planning Commission that's been removed. I just want to understand from you that you're committed to this location and that with the rezoning, you'll be starting, you'll be maintaining this business at that location?
It's a, that's a very subjective question. I'm sorry. That's kind of a subjective question for me to answer, because though I am committed to my business, we've had nothing but issues from day one, and the fight's been pushed out for me a little bit, so...
Okay, well, I just, I mean, we're not going to approve, to rezone it if, you know, I don't want to rezone it and then you fight to get out of your lease and leave, and then we have a...
The problem is, is that when we signed the lease, there were, everything was in place. The sign was a selling point, and that's been taken down, and there were no restrictions. I was under the impression that it was zoned correctly, when the get-go was, I wouldn't be standing here. And now, I believe from the Planning Commission's report, that things are being changed, that there would be no outside training, there would be, you know, the dog run would be thus here and whatnot, and that's not really how it was presented to me in the beginning, that's all. I'm committed to the business. I just, I'm at a loss to...
You just want to do it elsewhere?
I don't know. I just don't know what to, I really just don't know what to say.
Okay.
The sign, the sign has been removed, and, you know, that was a big, a big...
Selling point.
Well, because it's perpendicular to May, and I don't know.
Two blocks south on May is an almost identical business with an eight-foot sign. It's almost in the exact same location on the street.
Blocks.
South. There's another dog grooming. I mean, the sign is about eight feet, it's about in the same position on the street.
Right, and if that's what we were given, then I would have to make do with that, for sure, but...
Okay. Well, do you want some more time to think about it, about whether you're committed to this location?
It's really not my application, that's the thing. It's Mike and Mike's attorney, so I was sequestered here to speak, and I don't really have anything to say. I really don't. I mean, I just, I'm like a sock in the wind at the moment. I really, I've just been at the mercy of the rezoning and everything else. I mean, I just, I don't really know what to, what to say.
If we approve this rezoning, would you anticipate staying at this location?
Yes, I would stay, because I've invested money and five months, and perhaps my sleepless nights will end, but if you deny it, then yeah, I'll move somewhere else.
But if we approve it, you'll stay?
I'd have no choice but to stay, because I have, I have an investment there.
Okay.
I'm so, this has been the worst five months ever for me and my family, and I really have had nothing to do with it. It's just been a process with the landlord and his attorney and with the city, and I'm just a tenant, so I don't really know what to say.
I'm going to move for approval with some apprehension, but...
Okay.
Second.
Any other comments or questions from counsel? Motion is to approve.
I'm really confused. Why did planning deny it?
One was this 30-foot sign, it was, and as she alluded to, the idea of having outdoor training, but now I believe all the training's going to be indoors. The 30-foot...
Outdoor training of what? I'm really sorry that I'm so loose.
No, no, of dogs.
So behind here.
Of dogs. Dog training.
Okay, all right. But she's leasing the property?
Correct.
Not the owner that's wanting the rezoning?
Correct.
Was the rezoning to accommodate this leasing's business?
Yes. Strongly, strongly agrees with the...
But where we're at is the leasing's not happy with the fact she can't, that the sign has been taken out of the rezoning request? Is that what it is?
When she signed the lease, what, she was, she was told that we'll put a 30-foot sign, you know, so that everybody from May can see that you're...
Okay.
The sign was already in place, and I took, when I was kind of sold the building, sold the location, it was already there. It was, it was already assigned, it was already there, which was a big selling point for the, because it was perpendicular to Step Back from May Avenue. So reducing the sign will be a little bit harder, but I would be here as May if had it, I'd be told that it was zoned correctly in the first place.
Okay, so you signed a lease on property that wasn't zoned correctly for what you want to do in it? So you, you signed a lease with the understanding they would rezone it?
No, no, no. I was, so I was, I made the...
Laura, why don't you come up to the microphone? We can't really have extended conversation across the room.
One thing that happened that we just can't tolerate is the owner had trouble leasing the space, so to make it more sellable, he put up an illegal sign that was 30 feet tall, and then attracted this leasing with a 30-foot sign that was illegal. So then she entered into an agreement, thinking she was going to have this, this big sign that everybody could see from May.
We tried to pay for the coverings for the sign, and it's now been removed. The sign's been removed.
But the initial rezoning application was required because her business couldn't operate in there with the current zoning, is that correct?
Correct, because we got a code enforcement visit before we actually even opened.
So what you're wanting to do is allow the rezoning without the sign to allow her business, but she's unclear whether she's going to stay if she doesn't get to have the sign up there?
Yeah, right.
Is that what it is?
Correct, but I understand that she's going to stay if we do the zoning.
Wow.
Good.
If you're feeling confused, you can imagine the way I feel.
Well, I understand completely. I mean, I...
This is, this is the biggest mess ever.
The thing about it is, although we may be sympathetic to your plight, we're... The thing about it is, although we may be sympathetic to your plight, we're rezoning a property that's going to stay zoned that way forever unless it's rechanged again.
And that's what Mrs. Powers had tried to impart to me, that had it be a contract between her and I, then she can see that it is clean and whatnot, but...
We have a second on this motion to approve this. We have a motion and a second. Any other comments or questions? Anyone else want to speak? All right, cast your votes. Pass unanimously.
Gentlemen, Mrs. Howard, could we have the emergency ordinance on this, please?
What's the emergency?
This tenant needs to get operated fully.
She's not operating now?
She can't do the dog training or the daycare during the day only, under the current zoning. And Mr. Councilman, Laura, that's really the only difference between the zoning being requested and what it had been, is the dog grooming and being able to board dogs during the day. She could, she could, no, excuse me, training and boarding during the day. She was allowed to groom, but that was all, so she is the...
Move the emergency.
Okay. We have a motion and a second on the emergency. Vote on the emergency. Pass unanimously. An item 8B, which is an attempt to clean up our ticket scalping ordinance to reflect some new technology.
Wiley Williams is here this morning to go over the ordinance.
All right.
Introduce it to us.
We have one person that has signed up to speak, and so this item is being introduced today?
Yes, sir.
And the final adoption, if it went ahead, would be on March 13th. Okay. Wiley, you want to speak on this issue?
Yes, just briefly. The, the current ordinance has been in place since 1981. It's never been amended, and you can imagine in 1981, the internet was not around. People went to outlets to buy tickets, and at most, they were charged 50 cents or so as a convenancy for getting the tickets. Well, the ordinance is still on the book, and it is enforced. We get asked to enforce it frequently at big events when there's ticket scalping, so you're limited. And then we've come along, and we've had a lot of events over the past few years, such as Hannah Montana, Taylor Swift, Paul McCartney, that are huge sellouts, where we have counterfeit tickets showing up. We have complaints from parents who say the tickets sell out in a matter of minutes, and the only way they can get tickets for their children is to buy them at, from ticket scalpers and things who purchase them. So this, for the last several years, in our negotiations with SMG and some of the promoters of events, we, this issue of the ticket scalping has come up. Just so you know, the NCAA, it has a preference for communities that have ticket scalping ordinances, and that's why we kind of keep it on the books, is because it's preferred. Well, we've had these discussions, and then you come along and you add 42 very popular Thunder home games, so your frequency where you have three or four big concerts like that a year increases exponentially with 42 complete sellout games with the Thunder. So it's really become kind of a, an issue that's been bantered around the last several years, but it's become more important, obviously. So with that in mind, our office was challenged with trying to create some amendments to the ordinance that modernized it. We looked at some other ordinances and state statutes that have been out there that have been amendments made, and we tried to come up with an ordinance that balances the interest of the people, of the consumer buying a ticket, with the person who might want to sell the ticket. And keep in mind, we have an anti-scalping ordinance because we want, I guess, assume we want to stop scalping. But there's an interest in if you buy a legitimate ticket to an event and you want to resell it, how can we enable you to do that and balance your interests? And also, in today's market where you have promoters and who have to put up lots of money and put money at risk for these events, they have an interest in, you know, how their tickets are sold and what they're sold for, and, you know, they're bearing the risk, and then you have the ticket scalpers and people who, in a secondary market, who also want to profit from, from the risk that the promoter's bearing. So we tried to balance all of those, those interests. So we came up with a, an amendment to the ordinance that does three things. At one, it raises the 50 cents to $20. We ask SMG to look at some of the average add-ons to ticket prices for events that have been held at the Cost Convention Center and the Chesapeake Arena over the past few years, and we came up with $20 as being a fair amount to recover those costs and add a little bit, for most events, add a little bit of cushion for people that want to resell their tickets, to make that more balanced. And then we looked at also creating a 500-foot buffer zone that, I mean, if our idea is to discourage ticket scalping and also to protect the public, so they don't have to walk a gauntlet of people trying to resell tickets, we've created in this ordinance a buffer zone for 500 feet around the facade of the facility, that you can't sell your tickets in the public right-ofways or sidewalks for two hours before an event and one hour after. But you have the same interest, public safety-wise, after the event of getting people in and out safely, crossing the streets, that you have with them coming in. So two, two hours before, one hour after is the buffer zone. And then the third thing is...
I hate to interrupt, but do we have a problem with people selling tickets for an event after the event's over?
Sometimes they do, yes.
Well, if it were a tournament and there were more games coming up in the, in the same Big 12 tournament, for instance, and your team gets beat, and now you want to sell your tickets for the rest of them.
Makes you wonder about the public, though.
Right, it's not a huge event, I mean, situation afterwards, but the same public interests exist after the event as before.
You said two before, one after the event. What about during the event? As soon as they, as soon as the basketball game starts at 7:05, at 7:10, can scalpers be right up next to the door selling tickets?
That's, that's the window.
It's a window for two hours before and till one hour after.
Right.
While we're at this sort of, you're at a breakpoint, what businesses the city have in limiting the amount of profit, or what a person's wanting to pay for a ticket? It doesn't impact at all the promoter. He sold that ticket, unless somebody printed it in their basement, which is another case. But it doesn't, if, if a ticket's sold for a dollar, for instance, the promoter gets that dollar, and then if the guy wants to turn around and sells it for $100, and somebody's wanting to pay $100 for it, what businesses the city have in regulating that kind of thing? We don't regulate the value of used cars. If I buy a car for $100 and find somebody wanting to pay $200 for it, there's no regulation on that. Property, any other kind of property.
Mm-hmm.
And I'm not sure I understand what role the city has in trying to limit...
I would think it's trying to discourage a, a business from buying up all the prime tickets and then reselling them, thinking they can make more money, and really becoming a secondary market that keeps people from being able to buy tickets at, to events they want to...
Why don't we address businesses then instead of individuals? I, I know, it just seems like...
I'm suggesting that's probably the intent.
Well, I, maybe that's the intent, maybe that's worthwhile, but still, I'm not sure that, you know, from a philosophical standpoint, that's bad. You know, I mean, if we want to make it illegal for people to buy blocks for tickets, that's one thing. We might try to do that. I don't think it's legal either, but to me, it seems like we're interfering in what should be a business transaction. If I'm wanting to pay $100 to go see a ticket, see a particular show, why would the city say I can't do that?
I think the Big 12 has requested that that, there be a limit on there. They, they don't want their fans being taken advantage of. It's, and they have discretion about where they give events, and so they have a preference to cities who they give events to that they have ordinances like this in place. I don't know if specific, they have a number, but I know that's part of the background.
Well, are the tickets, from the inception of the tickets to the first stage of the delivery of the tickets, is there a control mechanism that the, the organizations have that tells how many tickets they are letting out to a particular individual or a particular company? Will this ordinance apply to internet sales as well?
Yes.
How, how are we going to police that?
Well, I think the limit is...
I'm sorry, I think the limit is 500 feet around the arena or where the event takes place. Is that correct, Wiley?
That's just the buffer zone before and after an event.
Right.
The ordinance that's on the books right now prohibits all sales of any ticket in Oklahoma City in excess of 50 cents, period. It's illegal to scalp a ticket in Oklahoma City. That's your current ordinance. We were just asked to modernize it. Which way enforce?
When you say scalp, does that mean even to sell it at face or below face value?
No, to sell it for more than 50 cents over face value.
Well, as long as we have that opportunity, because I was, I've been at events where you can't even resell it for face value, and that's, I think, frustrating, especially if you're coming from out of town.
Right.
And you just happen to have been able to upgrade your tickets, and you've got the original ones, to be able to sell those for at least face value seems fair.
I don't see why we have a limit on it. I'm sorry. It's, I apologize to the Big 12.
Well, we have one now.
I know we do.
What this is trying to, I think, to just trying to modernize, especially the, the internet has changed the way that the, the secondary market takes place.
I don't see how we can police internet sales.
Yeah. I, I can't imagine a situation where we would...
If we can't police internet sales, why should we police any sales?
But you have, we have vendors like SMG or, or like our NBA basketball team who have set up a secondary market on their own ticket websites.
That's fine. I have no problem with that at all.
And I think they would most likely adhere to whatever rules we set up.
Until the demand increases, or they could get more for it. I, I don't mean to be sarcastic, but I think it's, if this is interference in a transaction between two people, and I'm not sure the city has a role in it.
I would just say, we already have, we already have the ordinance in place.
The existing ordinance is bad, I think, also. It's not as bad as this one, but it has the same, it's the same philosophical problem that I have.
Okay.
It, it would seem to me to make more sense if what we're trying to do is protect the public, is we stop people from buying 500 tickets. That would be the, I mean, you, you see that all the time. You see ads in the paper, you know, I'm selling $3 gold certificates for $5 and limit five to a customer, you know? I mean, so it's got to be legal to limit the number of tickets. That's where, that's the problem I see. I would never have gone to a World Series game ever if I hadn't been able to buy a scalp ticket. I mean, I hardly go, I mean, when I go to St. Louis to watch baseball, I always buy a scalp ticket, because there's no way to get it, I don't have another way to know exactly when I'm going to be there and where I'm going to sit and all that. For me, if they scalp, if we eliminate scalp tickets...
This is liberalizing scalping tickets. I mean, this, this is actually increasing a, a profit margin that doesn't exist today. So if you're trying to increase the number of tickets that it could be scalped, this would tend to lean in that direction.
So you just need to get there more than two hours before the event starts.
See, you want to pay, you can't pay more than $20, no matter how bad you want to go see it.
Well, the, the big problem I, I see is not scalping at all. It is letting speculators buy a couple hundred tickets, and then you can't get a ticket because they, even if you're in line to get a ticket...
A lot of them do try and stop that.
Right.
You know, on the internet. They're selling on the internet.
There's limits.
Yeah, right. Usually there are.
And let me, we have been in conversation with the All Sports Association and our professional teams and our building managers about this, and, and what we're adopting here or recommending to be adopted is endorsed by those groups and somewhat standard with what we're finding with other cities out there in the country. That's right, again, it isn't totally an open market that we're allowing. One thing we need to be aware of as we address this, which is a bit of a different issue, but if you have your Thunder basketball tickets, you can go on the internet and cancel those tickets and have them printed out, and so those tickets are not valid, and you can have a piece of paper that is the valid ticket for the night, and you have these tickets that look just like valid tickets, and go down and sell them, and that's one of the reasons, because, I mean, it is, it's your old valid ticket that you've just invalidated on, on the computer, and so you can go down and, they look like real valid tickets and...
Would this ordinance ask you to only make $20?
Well, but, but the point is, that's why we're trying to control the selling of them around the buildings, because there are people that, unscrupulous people, that will, will sell those.
I have selling around the building, I think that doesn't bother you, because that gives them...
This could be a problem in, in terms of access, and it might be a little irritating to have people waving tickets in front of you. But I do think that we are on thin ice when we begin to interfere between people and private transactions. I know the existing ordinance was in, in place. If I had a chance, I would have voted against it 25 years ago when it was...
And if I, if I could jump into a slightly different subject matter, and it's the 500 feet, I had some comment from some citizens that said, you know, if you remove them to 500 feet away, you limit the ability to apprehend them. They've moved farther away from the perimeter of the building, and I, I mean, I had that example personally happen, where somebody purchased tickets and were in my seats, the people that saw them do that, and we were able to apprehend them. So there's some question about whether or not it makes sense to restrict them that far from the building. Just a comment.
Okay. Larry?
I just have a question. Somebody, at some point, why aren't we introducing this today? Is that right, Chair?
That's correct.
How, how this new ordinance impacts counterfeit or bad ticket sales? I, I don't see the connection between the $20 and the fact that you can have somebody come up with a counterfeit ticket.
That is not a connection. It's a connection on the distance away from the building.
Well, I thought, I thought part of this, the whole reason of doing this was to try to limit the, the counterfeiting...
Multiple pieces of the, of the ordinance.
Okay.
We have someone that's signed up.
Is the, can I ask?
Yeah, sure.
Is the ordinance only going to apply to downtown district?
No, the ordinance applies citywide.
So if you have the Amphitheater or any other concert that's outside of downtown Oklahoma City, this, this would apply?
The Civic Centers, the Fairgrounds, any of those facilities?
Symphony Theater.
Is my clarification, on the clarification on the 50 cents and the 20 cents, uh, $20, is my understanding that a person can sell a ticket and make no more than, they can make as much as $20 off of the resale of the ticket?
Right, and the reason that amount was chosen, when you go to buy tickets, there are convenience charges in today's world. There's convenience charges, there's credit card fees, there's sometimes facility fees that aren't reflected on the face of the ticket. So today, for instance, the ordinance has 50 cents. Well, you may have paid $15 above the face value of that ticket in, in those fees, that if you go out and try to sell your ticket today, and you're trying to recover everything you paid for the ticket, you can't do it legally. So we raise that amount to be sure that we cover the, the average convenience fees and charges that are put on a ticket and give a little bit of cushion. So...
So the person that's reselling the ticket is basically saying that the reason why I have to sell it at this amount is because I got to recoup all these other fees that's been assessed to this ticket, is that right?
Right.
From its inception, is that right?
That was the, the concept. Because when the police officer is out enforcing the, the ordinance, all he's going to look at is the face value of the ticket and if you're selling it for more than 50 cents. Well, that's not fair to you if you really paid $15 more than the face value for the ticket. You're only trying to recover your cost.
If all of this is cash, who really knows how much you paid for the ticket? I'm, I'm trying to...
That's why we chose a $20 number.
Are you asking the person that purchased the ticket, how much did you pay that individual for the ticket? Or are you asking the person who sold the ticket, how much did you sell the ticket for? I mean, where, where's the proof of this, this purchase price if, I don't think these people are doing this with a credit card or a check?
No, when they're doing it on the streets, they're just walking up and saying, I'll sell you this ticket for $150. It cost me $50. And that's more than 50 cents over the face value, so you're subject to arrest under the current ordinance.
So have the, have the arrest that we've, in, in enforcement of the prior, of the, the ordinance that's in place now, is this usually enforced by using officers to purchase the tickets?
Yes.
Okay. So we haven't really apprehended... So we haven't really apprehended a lot of individuals by just common, real people wanting to purchase the tickets? You usually use undercover officers in order to enforce this ordinance to find out who is in Oklahoma City scalping, or, I hate to use the word scalping, but it, that's, who are selling tickets above what you say the 50 cents margin is, is that right?
Right, but it can happen to anybody, and does happen to mom and pop, as we called them when we were looking at this.
Okay, but is there a real problem if, as Councilman Ryan stated, if I want to pay $150 for a ticket that if I purchased it a week ago, I could have got the ticket for $60 or $50, and if I choose to pay because I really want to go to this event and I'm at the last hour and someone is standing outside saying, you know, "I got a ticket," and I say, "How much is a ticket?" And it says, "$150, and I say, "Hey, here's $150." Am I in violation of the law?
No, the purchaser is not. It's the seller.
Just the seller.
Just the seller.
Mike Chandler. Morning. Mike, we will need your name and address for the record.
Mike Chandler, 1514 Sunrise.
Okay.
There's three separate issues here, all going into the same ordinance. What I'm not understanding is if we waited 30 years to revise this ordinance, why we're doing it so hastily under an emergency order instead of looking at the different possibilities? There are a lot of different ordinances around the country that make a lot more sense than I sent all of y'all an email. I don't know if y'all had time to get it or read it, that addresses most of these concerns that I have, and even proposes some changes that might make more sense. Right now, even a $20 cap on the, over the face value of the ticket, the terrace suites for a Thunder game have a $24 service charge. So that makes the facility, the ticket agents at the ticket office at Chesapeake Arena in violation of this proposed law. The same way that every ticket that's been sold for the last several years has been in violation, because the service charges themselves are over 50 cents. And if we're only going to revisit this every 30 years, I see it becoming a problem again and again and again. Any cap on restricting, you know, the amount you can get over the face value is, I think, very unfair in theory. I mean, I understand wanting to protect consumers, but as other councilmen have stated, what is the difference between selling a ticket for more than you paid for it, or selling your used car? Or, you know, I mean, it's, it's business. It's free trade. I've got lots and lots of different municipal ordinances, state ordinance or state laws that have been repealed. We're down to six states that have laws governing ticket sales and several municipalities. As far as breaking them down issue by issue, I think I covered my opinion on being able to sell a ticket for whatever you want. The 500-foot buffer zone, as Ms. Sawyer said, it just invites anyone who's selling a fraudulent ticket more opportunity, because you don't know that it's a fraudulent ticket until you get to the game. If they're 500 feet or more away, by the time a police officer comes back down to apprehend, they're long gone.
Yeah.
The instances of counterfeit tickets, not, they're not counterfeit. As Mr. Couch said, the Thunder has in place, if you're a season ticket holder, you can print off a PDF file of your ticket, and by doing that, it renders the original ticket completely invalid. Ticket scalpers on the street are generally not season ticket holders, so these instances of people being sold fraudulent tickets, it's where a season ticket holder has sold his tickets on eBay, sent the PDF file format, taken a hard ticket on his way to the game, and sold it to a ticket scalper. If they don't like ticket scalpers, or if they're just trying to make a quick buck themselves, the point is, it's not the ticket scalpers that are doing this. We're actually trying to make, and some people will disagree, an honest living. As far as the impedance of traffic and harassment, Norman has no, no ordinance against selling tickets. They don't have a 500-foot buffer, and Saturday after Saturday in the fall, 88,000 people go to Municipal Stadium without incident. In fact, Oklahoma City is the only city in this state that has an ordinance that restricts the sale of tickets, but certainly not the only city that has major events. Mayor Cornet, you mentioned, I think, that organizations like the Big 12 look unfavorably on cities that don't have scalping ordinances. I believe it was 2009, maybe 2008, Kansas City, Missouri, major host city of the Big 12 Basketball Tournament, repealed its ordinance. They have a permit that can be issued. That way, for cases of fraudulent ticket sales, a consumer can reference a name, a permit number, and it can be dealt with that way. That's how they choose to handle it.
And you like, you like that better?
I just think it makes more sense.
It professionalizes the industry. That's what, that's, it would be your concern.
It takes the...
The part of this, and Mike, I don't mean to cut you off, but the part of this that I conceive both sides of the issue is the 500-foot ordinance, 500-foot. I once bought a ticket that was no good, that was out of town somewhere, and so I went and bought another ticket. But this time, I made the person who sold it go with me to the, to the game, and we scanned it, and I didn't pay him until it had scanned. And I guess if I'd had to haul him in from 500 feet out, I'm not sure how that necessarily would have worked.
I've walked through the...
But what we're trying to do is, we don't want, you know, we don't want our potential customers to be inundated with people trying to sell them tickets. The flip side of that is what I just described. So I mean, there's, you know, I can see both sides of that argument. Don't have a strong opinion either way, but I've witnessed the reason you would want the person selling you the ticket to be within 500 feet of the turnstile, so you can make sure that the ticket's good. Mike, I think what you're saying is, you don't like our current ordinance, and even though this one's better, it's still not what you want, and you would like to have it completely examined and looked at from the industry's point of view, whereas we're looking at it from the promoter and citizen and city point of view, and certainly the police department's point of view is involved in all this, too. So we just, we have different perspectives here.
Sure.
And this is just being introduced today. You acted like this was an emergency.
I had a red at the bottom, sorry.
Yeah, we're, this is not an emergency. There's no haste being taken here, and we have a public forum like this, so you can come up and exert your opinions. So anyway, I think we get your point.
Okay.
And urge your friends to come back in a week or two if they have new points, or you want to show that other people feel as you do, and we'd be glad to consider that as we move closer to a date when we vote.
Okay. Thank you.
Your Honor.
Yeah, Dan.
Could we ask Wiley or the legal department to, and Chief City, to consider registering resellers of tickets and they would be exempt from this ordinance?
Why don't we have them look at what Kansas City's doing? I don't know, one more regulated business, just, it doesn't sound like a step in the right direction to me, but...
Well, I'm not sure how regulated it would be, other than there'd be a trail...
Well, they'd have to, they'd have to pay a fee, so in other words, in other words, you couldn't go out and scalp a ticket, but Mike could. That's, that would be the, that would be the result.
Right.
And I think what, I think a lot of people would like to think that, you know, if they have a ticket and for whatever reason they can't go to a game, they'd like to be able to sell it. And maybe they paid more than face value, and so I think we're trying to, trying to keep that option open to them.
Sure.
Yeah. I don't know. I see your point, but I don't know that I necessarily think that's a better idea.
Thank you.
Yeah, Gary?
Just so I'm clear as we move forward to this, and we got two more hearings on it, I know. Come back up here, Wiley. No. The buffer zone, 500 foot, the $20 more than face value on the ticket is the 20, you can't sell it for $20 more inside the buffer zone? Are they tied together at all?
They're not tied together. You just, you can't sell tickets at all inside the buffer zone.
Internet, whatever it may be, you can't sell it for more than $20 legally under our, if we adopted this ordinance?
On the Internet, if the, Section 3, if the promoter or event organizer authorizes a ticket exchange through the Internet where the ticket is guaranteed, the purchaser of the ticket is guaranteed, then that promoter can set whatever parameters he wants on the resale of the ticket.
Okay. The 500-foot buffer, would that apply to anybody? So if I have a ticket that I can't go to that night, I've got to stay outside the 500 foot to even resell it at the face value?
Or $20 over, right.
Okay.
That's the way it's structured.
Okay.
Do we, we need to vote on the introduction, Francis?
Yes.
All right. We have a motion in a second. We're voting on item 8E. Here we go. Passed unanimously. Item 8F is an ordinance that's also being introduced today that will keep people from jumping off a tall building.
This shouldn't need as much discussion, hopefully. In April, as you know, in April, we had two individuals jump off the Devon Tower, April of 2011. The most they could be charged with was trespassing. We don't have anything as far as base jumping, any ordinances or state laws that cover that, and this ordinance, basically, what it does, it makes it a violation to parachute, to rappel, to do anything off of a building or any other structure within, within the city limits. So it makes it a Class B offense, which is a quarter record, which makes the fine pretty significant to discourage this from occurring, yeah?
Yeah, that sounds like a good idea to me. And people jump off television towers occasionally, too. Not a good idea.
Move the end of that.
All right. Second, motion in a second. Any comments or questions about this item that is being introduced today? This is a public hearing. All right, cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Thanks, Chief. Item 8G is a list of dilapidated structures. We have one person that has signed up to speak, James Cooksey. Good morning. James, which property are you here to speak about?
1704 Northeast 50th. My parents owned the house, and they let it get pretty bad. They are...
Hold on, hold on, I'm not seeing it listed here under, oh, I'm looking under unsecured. I see it now. It's item 8G 1E. Okay, and Ward 7.
Yeah, and I worked on cutting the grass. I'm trying to get the property up to code, and I, right now, I need an extension. But I have removed and cut the grass and removed a lot of the debris around the property. And I need more time to get all those June trees out, especially around the alleyway, and it's just hard going to work and doing it by yourself, but I have cleaned up a lot of the property.
George, Mr. Cooksey?
Yes.
Or is it...
George is my father. He's, they're elderly, and they, you know, I just had to take this property off of my parents, so...
Okay. And your name is?
I'm James. I'm on this side.
Okay. What's the plans for the property?
Well, the plan's for me to move, I wasn't living in the house 10 years ago, and I'm going to try to move back into the house and get my house fixed up the way I used to have it. So I'm going to, I'm going to go in there and regut it out and re-clean it out and re, re, and come back home. That's my, my, my plan.
Charles, can you show me just the house itself, because I think I keep getting confused with this shade?
Well, this is the back of the structure. The back, this right here, the picture right there, slow down, that is the back of the structure. That's the add-on part of the house. That is, and it has a flat roof, and the flat roof has always sagged, because it is a flat roof. But I have changed that roof out 10 years ago. The front part of the house, that part right in there, that's the, that part of the structure's in pretty good shape. It's just the add-on part in the back of the structure is, is the part that's, is really sagging. But it wouldn't be nothing to take that off and redo it, and that's what I need. I need time to take that off and redo it. Now, I cut all the grass around there. It's an acre on the property, so, you know, with the personal lawn mower, it's taking a little while, but I got it cut, and I just need, I just need more time. And I just want you to give me a little time where I can do this and fix the property up. I don't want to lose it for my parents.
So, James, are you doing the work yourself, or are you...
Yes, sir. I'm doing it myself. I did that roof once about 10 years ago. I did, probably about 15 years ago, I took that roof off myself and redid it, you know, myself. I took that garage apartment, when that ice storm came up, Lord, you know, just, the ice storm knocked out every window on the front of the house, and the back part of the house, and then the, the, just the weather, the ice storm, that, that ice storm came and knocked, we got pecan trees, all like big, big pecan trees, about 16 big pecan trees in the back of the structure. Right behind there is just nothing but pecan trees, and the pecan trees, the ice storm came and broke limbs, and it landed on top of the garage, and which made the garage blow, I mean, just blowing the garage over. See them big pecan trees? The whole, the whole backyard's nothing but pecan trees. And the pecan trees hit that other side of the house and just made it lean. Excuse me.
Well, James...
Yes, sir.
In all fairness, I understand what your dilemma is, and especially if you're trying to do this yourself, but there's got to be some, some timeframe that staff has to have from you that will give them some assurance that you're making some deliberate, good faith...
I have, I cut, I got the yard cut. I'm doing one step. Just work with me, man.
I understand, but I don't think the yard is, is a paramount concern. It's the structure that the city is looking at right now.
I want, I want to take that and redo the rest, sir.
But we need some timeframes, because this is unsafe for, for any child that may, may happen upon this property, a multitude of different human issues could occur in properties like this. And that's the concern that we have, is for the safety and the welfare of individuals, and especially children that may happen to, to be attracted one way or the other to, to properties like this and to the structure. And, and so, how much time do you need? I mean, it's obvious that the house itself is unsecure.
Yeah.
There's some very structural safety issues there. So what time are you looking at?
Can you give me like a two-month frame to, to, to do more improvements and work with me on a step-by-step program to try to get my, I have also talked to some of the church and, and my community that I go to, to try to help me with this process to renewal.
Okay. Well, Charles, if you could get with Mr. Locke...
Yes.
And, and give him a, a plan of attack to address the major issues...
Okay.
That could show them that you're making a, a running effort to, to cure these problems, then we can work with you.
Thank you, sir. That's all I ask, man. Mr. Cornet?
All right, you understand our concern.
Oh, yes, sir.
Okay, so get it secured.
Yeah.
And Charles, how, how concerned are you that this may just fall down? I mean...
It only has one structure, the garage is...
The garage is the one that...
...a bit concerned.
Then you probably ought to start there.
Well, you want me to, the garage needs to be towed down, to tell you the truth. I mean, I needed, I mean, because the, like I said, the trees, when the ice storm broke and it just hit it, and, you know, I can't stop Mother Nature.
Great.
Okay. So I'll try to get...
Work with Charles, and he'll, he'll, he'll be, he'll be very fair to you.
I met you once before.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah, at the W Grill. You had two students that you was taking for lunch. I was your waiter.
Okay.
Okay. He's a great tipper.
Did I tip well?
Thank you, thank you very much.
I'm going to get good service from now on everywhere I go. Thanks for coming down, James.
That's right. That's right.
All right. Anybody here wishing to speak on any item listed under 8G, the dilapidated structures? All right. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 8H is a public hearing regarding unsecured structures. Is there anyone here wishing to speak on any item listed under 8H? All right. We have a motion and a second. Any comments or questions? All right. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. We're on item 8I. It's a series of three revocable rights-of-way permits. We'll vote on them individually. The first is for the Run Lucky 5K, which is going to take place on March 11th. If approved, yes, sir. What can you tell us about this event that'll take place in Ward 2?
This is the second year of the Run Lucky.
I need your name and address, too, for the record.
Don Garrett, 14420 South Meridian, president of DG Productions.
Okay. Tell us about the race.
The race is to raise money for the Friends of LLS, which is money for the Leukemia Lymphoma Society.
Okay.
Last year, we predicted we'd have about 500. We ended up with 1,500. So last year, we didn't close traffic in this area with the help of Chesapeake, Love's Country Stores, Resideo, the Red Coyote. The run ends in the class and curve there and starts over at the Chesapeake. And what we need to close is that area where we start there for the Chesapeake.
Okay. Staff has approved this. Sounds good. Ed, you okay with this? All right. You want to make a motion?
Yes, sir.
Second. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Good luck.
Thank you.
Item 8I2 is for the St. Patrick's Day party, which should be held at McNally's. It's in Ward 6. Is anyone here representing McNally's? Come on forward. Tell us about your event that's going to happen on St. Patrick's Day weekend.
Your Honor and council members, thank you. We do this every year. McNally's has been there going on its fifth year now, and a lot of things that we've got from the communities, most of the activities that they have have not been in the area of Midtown, Heritage Hill, Mesa Park. They wanted something local. This is going to be our fourth year doing it. Everybody really seems to enjoy it. We get a big crowd. Luckily, this year, the parade falls on the same day as our party, so we're hoping to get a lot of people from that, just to have a good celebration, to bring more people to the Midtown area. It's been growing so much, and we thought that we've been a big part of it, and we hope to continue to do so.
Great. Meg, you'll make a motion?
Certainly. Move approval.
All right. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Thanks and good luck. And then on item 8I3 is the St. Patrick's Day Parade itself, which is in Wards 6 and 7. Come on forward.
Good morning. I'm Paula Jones, director of the parade, and this will be our 30th year. The parade is scheduled this year for St. Patrick's Day, which is obviously unusual. So we will begin at 1:00, 5th and Broadway, going south on EK Gaylord, and then turning east onto Sheridan through Bricktown.
All right.
Make a motion to approve.
All right. Second. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Thanks, Paula. We're on item 8J. It's a contract amendment for Bicentennial Park. We have one person that has signed up to speak. Sandy Myers?
I'm Sandy Myers, 1603 Dreary Lane, and I want to address the mayor and the council. And I am talking about Bicentennial Park, and I will be brief because I fear redundancy. But there are two things I want to address. And the first one is the length of time that this issue has been discussed and addressed. And I'd like to also address the people that have been involved from my point of view. In 1989, the Alliance for Cultural Facilities was formed, and from there, the information of this committee, which worked for some time, was fed into Mayor Norick's Cultural Task Force, that then fed into the formation of MAPS that was constructed by Rick Harrow, who was hired by our Chamber of Commerce. A part of the proposal was restructuring of what is now known as Bicentennial Park. Fast-forwarding from 1989 to 2009, when the plans for the Devon Tower and renovation of downtown Oklahoma City were revealed, and a committee headed by Rand Elliott was formed to look into the design or redesign of Bicentennial Park, number two, the people that have been involved. This Alliance for Cultural Facility that was formed in 1989 consisted, pre-completed, of over 120 people. We looked at this for some time and discussed it for some time. Now then, in 2009, the committee that was formed and served under Rand Elliott included public representatives Kathy O'Connor, Russell Klaus, Larry Ogle, Mike Clark, Laura Story, Andre French, Roy Williams, and Jane Jenkins. The other group included were adjacent property owners and groups. For example, Glenn Gentile from the Museum of Art, Jim Brown, the manager of Civic Center, and Beth Short, head of Leadership Oklahoma City. From the private citizens, I want to say Sandy Myers, Terry Cooper, Carol Troy, Alan Payne. And let me also say that from our 120 committee of the Alliance for Cultural Facilities, it included people from the north part of town, from the south part of town, from the east part of town, and from the west part of town. We designed it so it would be diversified. There were nine meetings under Rand Elliott, approximately eight to nine months. There were four concepts developed and presented. There were five proposals presented. My conclusion, this has been discussed, discussed, and discussed and prepared for 23 years. Hundreds of people have been involved in the preparation and discussion of this property. And I plead it is time to make this structure the centerpiece of our cultural area here in Oklahoma City and to complement our City Hall. Thank you.
Thanks, Sandy.
Are there any questions?
Okay. Thank you.
Are we taking comments on all the Bicentennial Park project, or is J just for architectural services? Do you want it?
Well, item K is reliant on J passing. Does that make sense? So...
Well, is it? I mean, if they've done the work and you...
There are three items here today. One is the architectural amendment, which is item J. Second is item K1, which is a donation from Devon that is contingent upon item J being passed. That donation's for $475,000. And then item K2 is the actual worth of the construction contract.
So they are all interrelated, although they're separate items? Devon is not going to pay the $575,000 unless we do a fee increase of $162,000 for PDG?
That was... Eric?
Although it's not specifically in the agreement, Devon has already submitted payment of the $575,000 in anticipation of the award of contract. You won't find the language in the actual agreement, but through the negotiations that we had, that was the understanding.
How much have we paid PDG for architectural fees to date?
I don't have that figure, but their total contract is $425,000, and the amount that's remaining to be performed is about $85,000 in work.
On Sunday, didn't we discuss that it was $250,000?
That was just through the design fees up to that point, but we've actually completed now the bidding services. So the amount remaining is the amount to do construction administration and as-built drawings.
My understanding is $250,000, and now we're going to add $162,000 for a total of $412,000.
I think the questions were how much we had paid for the plumber report, but we've come through final plans. So we're upwards of $300,000 paid to date when you include the final plans, just shy of about $100,000 remaining for construction administration services. The add alternates for $162,000 were for approximately $3.5 million, and alternates cost over the $4.5 million estimate for the total project. So the $162,000 fee would apply towards what was estimated at that time as about $3.5 million of additional enhancements to the park, not included with the base bid estimate of $4.5 million.
I'm having some trouble following that, but basically, we're going to... We're paying $162,000 for designs that we didn't ultimately use. Is that correct?
There were 10 alternates that were requested through the stakeholder process to be considered for third-party potential funding. The fee was much higher than $162,000. That was the negotiated amount. So staff was able to negotiate a amount of $162,000 to pay for alternate designs as bid alternates that were expected value of a $3.5 million added value to the project. We're only recommending in a later item today, a ward of four of those alternates, which actually is for two major components, the pavilions and the signs.
This is... I just need a simple answer. How much are we paying for architectural and design fees on this project with this $162,000?
We'll pay $425,000 plus an additional $162,000 if council approves the amendment today.
$425,000 plus $162,000?
If council approves the amendment today, yes.
That would be a whopping percentage of the total of the $3.6 million project fee.
Well, the original fee was negotiated on a $4.5 million scope of work, and the percentage of that fee was about 9.4%.
Even a $4.5 million project, that would be a 10% architectural and design fee. That would be... I would consider that high.
I think if we look at it from an alternate's perspective of $162,000 on a $3.5 million worth of additional enhancements, that's about a 4.6% fee.
But I guess I'm having trouble understanding. If we ask someone to design spinner tops and things that we want, that we approve, we sign off on, and that we don't use them, I could understand not paying for that, but to pay for designs that were universally rejected, I'm not understanding why we're paying it as an enormous percentage of the total project.
On city work, we will traditionally look at add alternates when opportunities exist for additional funding. And we obviously don't engage engineers and architects to design add alternates that are not possible to be awarded. But if I use the Master Kids Project, for example, we frequently look at alternate processes, many which never get awarded, but in anticipation that additional funds might become available or that we might receive better bids than anticipated, we like to leave those open for flexibility. So I would not say that we don't award alternates regularly. We try to award as many as we can, but we do pay for designs upfront frequently for alternates we don't ultimately award.
Eric, it's also my understanding that these things were designed at the request of the committee.
Yes, they were. They were from the stakeholder process.
That the architect undertook at the request of the committee that was looking at the design.
He did, and he went at risk of, in his contract, of doing the work without having an amendment in place.
And additionally, just in terms of the scope of the fee, my experience has been that an architectural fee somewhere ranges between 10% and 15% of the project.
That's not really my experience. That's not what we paid in 2001, where we did the some work in the front of the Civic Center. We paid more like 7% to 8%. Here, we're paying 16%.
It's 16% if you don't count all of the design work he did for things not awarded. For example, City Hall Park, he did the design on that. It was bid out, and it's anticipated that we'll use that design at some point in the future. That's not part of the contract award to date. But as we get to Project 180, hopefully, we will be able to use that. And so that's not wasted effort. That's effort that we will hope we do. So if you add some of those other things that were designed, you know, it all depends what you're dividing into, Dr. Sheed, and so it depends what you divide out. But if you add the alternates and the Bicentennial Park with the City Hall Park and some of the others, that fee would be...
It doesn't matter what you divide into. It's just it's going to be high for any of those denominators. It's just how high. I mean, I would think for almost $600,000, we wouldn't have electric sign questions that aren't compliant, that we're talking about having to go to Board of Adjustment. We have to redesign the fountain stage. We're having to have the public recoil in horror at these spinner tops. $600,000 is too much of the taxpayers' money for this project, for architectural and design fees. There would have been architects who would have gladly done this for much, much less.
Councilman, I think I need to correct one thing. The signs are not compliant. We do not need to go to the Board of Adjustment for the signs.
Only because we moved them in. With the original design that the architectural firm gave us, it was out of compliance. I think for $600,000, that what they presented to us would be in compliance with our own ordinances, but they weren't.
We frequently ask for ordinances on behalf of the city, but we did correct... They were corrected, and they are compliant, and we do not need to go to the Board of Adjustment.
I understand that.
I just need that to be on the record.
Anybody else want to speak on this issue?
I pretty well said what I thought last time, so I don't want to belabor everybody with it, but...
But I bet you will.
And I'm going to anyway. But there are more to all this than just this design thing. This is how this got prioritized ahead of fixing the streets, how it got prioritized ahead of finishing Gaylord so we could facilitate the hub. You know, we can talk about everybody should have known this. There were nine meetings, or I don't care if there were 99 meetings. There was never a meeting on determining whether this was our priority ahead of fixing the street. Councilman Kelly has repeatedly talked about the complaints he's received about how long it took and how long the streets are disrupted. By putting this project ahead, we are going to then finish the streets that we have now, and then we're going to come back and tear up some later because we changed the priority. I mean, it doesn't make any sense. It just makes no sense. It makes no sense that we've not been involved in it. Doesn't matter to me what anybody tells me. I didn't know about it, and I come every Tuesday. I read my agenda. I didn't know about it. I didn't realize where it was going to fall in the list of priorities. Maybe everybody in the room did. I didn't. I don't think everybody in the room did. I'm disgusted that...
Do we expect to have Gaylord done by the time the hub is built, Jim?
But my point is...
I'm just asking. I want to know that, too.
The Gaylord is in the Project 180 in Streetscape Package 7, which will be done in a couple of years. It could be done in coordination with the hub as we go forward.
Okay. I just want to make sure it's done by the time...
We're talking about Hudson being two-way, one-way, two-way. All that stuff should have been organized in a way that would have prioritized it ahead of what we're doing in this park. I mean, I can just go... I'm not going to go on about it. I think it's an absolute atrocity that we are taking that park out and storing everything in it with the idea that someday, we're going to figure out what to do with all that stuff. You know, I just think that's not one HP person involved in this design, not one HP person, not one, nobody. I mean, I just think it's this that we... We just let this kind of stuff... We just let ourselves be run over by this, by this, "Oh, well, this is what we ought to do." Well, this isn't what we ought to do. We've got an obligation to spend the taxpayers' money in a way that makes sense. And so when you do these projects, a little bit here, a little bit there, and then you come back and change, and then you take half of the historical... Most of the historical stuff in Oklahoma City is all located in one spot. You take it and you put it in a closet somewhere and expect somebody who didn't care enough about it in the first place to try to figure out what to do with it, you expect that group then to come back and figure out what to do with it the next time around? I mean, come on.
I just want to... I want to pick up...
We just roll over projects. We just sit here every Tuesday, and these kind of things come up, and we all have reservations about it, but we just let our jobs be rolled over.
Okay. I think there's two issues. One is the design of the park, which I don't like, Pete doesn't like, people don't like. But that's, to me, that's secondary to the process, and I think this needs to come to a head. I think this is absolutely unacceptable, as Pete's talked about. I brought up three months ago, why are we prioritizing the Bicentennial Park over EK Gaylord, Hudson? And we said, well, something... The mayor said, something has to get done first, something has to get done last. I brought it up on the 14th. Jim said, we have a contractual obligation. We promised this to Devon. I met with Dennis Clowers and Eric Wiener. They indicated to me on Sunday that we have this in our contract, that we have a contractual obligation to do Bicentennial Park. And I asked, well, is that legally binding? What would happen if we didn't do it? do that? They indicated that, well, you might have to modify the agreement, because this is on the list of priority projects, and this needs to get done. Let me just, let me just pass this around, I just wanna look at this, I just wanna revisit this agreement with Devon from two thousand and nine. If you, if you look at the priority projects, okay, which is, which is Table B one, okay, EK Gaylord's on there, bicentennial park's on there, number sixteen, so is EK Gaylord, so has Hudson, so are a number of things that haven't been done. Just, just to put it in perspective of how farcical this was, Stage Center improvements, improvements to be determined as necessary and appropriate to create a functional, safe, attractive, and commercially viable performing arts venue. For the, for the, I mean, this Stage Center reconstruction was, was considered a priority project. If you look at Exhibit B two, this is the completion timeframes for certain priority public improvements. On A, Hudson Avenue, was supposed to be done by November thirtieth, two thousand and eleven, by contract, it's not complete. C, Robinson Avenue, no, supposed to be completed no later than October first, two thousand and ten, we're still working on it. E, Sheridan Avenue, supposed to be completed no later than November thirtieth, two thousand and eleven, it's still being worked on. G, the north-south pedestrian connector with the, I think we, we just approved some of this today, we haven't even started yet. I, Main Street Park and Galereysite Plaza improvements, we haven't started yet. So the idea that we're contractually bound to do bicentennial park, I, I think is, is not accurate. I appreciate Ms. Myers indicating that for twenty-three years, people have wanted to do bicentennial park, for much longer than that, people have wanted to address the pedestrian safety issues on EK Gaylord, for much longer than that, people have wanted to address two-way streets in downtown. We can't all get what we want. We just renovated the Miria Gardens, we're millions of dollars over budget. We have just approved a one-hundred-and-thirty-million-dollar park in the Cordishore area. How many parks do we need, how many parks can we accommodate in one square mile area? In the DDRC, we're talking, we have these fantasies about that we're gonna, we're gonna put sixty-amp electrical services all throughout the, the bicentennial park so that we can have large and, large new events in the park, really? What new events are we gonna have that we're not gonna have over at the Miria Gardens, or in the new one-hundred-and-thirty-million-dollar Cordishore Park? Why is this a priority? We, we, we've invested well in parks in this square mile. We, we had the same kind of things talked about, that we'd have pre-function, we'd have symphonies out there, we just, ten years ago, we did part of the, the design outside of the Civic Center. I don't understand how these projects are being prioritized. I know that it's not the people's elected officials who are making the decisions, and it needs to be. It, the, if you look back and you watch the Project One Eighty reports, they are such fluff, they are so inadequate, did, skipped over all of these issues, and did not give us adequate, we did not have adequate discussion, and the ability, it would have been clear a long time ago, we're not gonna have the money to, to complete all these projects, and we're gonna have to let some things go. And there was never any discussion about what was gonna be let go and what was gonna be done. Clearly, somebody wanted this done, and we, we kept paying hundreds of thousands of dollars in architectural fees when it was clear that we weren't gonna get all our streetscapes done. So Pete pointed it up last week, and, and nobody answered, just went unanswered. I can't have it be unanswered anymore. I can't be told that we have some contractual obligation to Devon when clearly we haven't fulfilled many contractual obligations.
Ed, I wanna let some other people talk.
Thanks. I just wanna say one thing, you know, I appreciate the comments Councilman White and Councilman Tredie made, but I, I think they need to realize there's a certain degree of subjectivity in their comments, whether you like the park or don't like the park, some people like Chevy, some people like Fords, that's, that's an internal decision people are gonna have to come to themselves. Most of the people I've talked to like the new design of the park. Now, there are a few naysayers, but the majority say it's okay. Priorities are always subjective. There's, there's no solid rule of priorities, and as far as pedestrian traffic on EK Gaylord, I'd like to have a list of those people who were killed or run over in EK Gaylord Boulevard. Just, you know, a short list, you don't have to get, no, no names, just the number of people. I don't, it's, it's a problem certainly, but I don't think it's a critical problem, and it's something we have to jump out.
We need to do it all, and, you know.
Exactly.
But the idea that a, a park somehow doesn't increase the pedestrian friendliness of downtown, I mean, I, I think, we wanna do it all, but we can't do everything at the same time. Meg, do you wanna start?
I guess, an awful lot to say, but these parks and this string of parks is part of a, a master plan that we have been talking about for a very long time, and Councilman Sheed, I think we're trying to address a lot of the things that are of concern to you, including health and well-being of our citizens, and to be able to create this string of parks, each one that will allow some different things to occur, you weren't here last week, but we did have a conversation about the kinds of things that will happen in that park, and my thinking is what we're creating in this particular space is an outdoor living room for our Civic Center and for our art museum, and a unique venue that will not be the same as the Miria Gardens, and will certainly not be the same as the Central Park. I think it's an important piece of creating the linkages that we've talked about for years, connecting different parts and different pieces of the city together, and the design received some criticism before we had all the information, I think the presentation that was made last week was very favorably received, not just by those of us who ran the horseshoe, but by citizens that have had a chance to see it, both in the DDRC and the presentation that was made here. I, I just think it's a significant element that we need to, we need to complete, and as the mayor said, we need to try to complete them all. But it all has to be done, you know, over a timeframe, and it just can't all be done at once.
Yeah. Meg, it's in Ward Six, you wanna make a motion?
I make a motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Anybody else here wishing to speak? All right, cast your votes on Item Eight J. Motion passes seven to two. Onto Item Eight K, also in Ward Six. Any comments or questions on this item? All right, Meg, you wanna make a motion on Eight K?
Yes, I can make a motion, please, on Eight K.
Do we have a second? Anyone here wishing to speak on this item? All right, cast your votes. Passes seven to two. Passes eight to one.
This is K one we're voting on?
This is K one.
Yes, K one, passes eight one.
And move approval on K two.
All right, comments or questions on Item Eight K two? Anyone here wishing to speak? All right, cast your votes. Passes seven to two. Thanks, everyone, I appreciate everyone that, that showed up today to speak on this item. Onto Item Eight L, this is authorizing our annual bond issue sale. Fifty million up from last year?
It's, yeah, it's up from last year. We've, we've had a couple of down years because of the economy, and it isn't that we've had a drop in the valuation of properties in Oklahoma City, it just hasn't increased as what we thought we were gonna be at when we projected those in two thousand and seven. So we've had a couple of light years in two thousand and ten and two thousand and eleven, this is up to fifty million dollars, and, and next year's a pretty good year, Eric, is it like seventy?
Seventy-nine.
Seventy, wow, yeah, it could be eighty, eighty or more, so, and, and again, those are all based upon our projections as, as we go forward. So we're coming back on, on this, a list of the projects have been presented to council and their founding city manager report attached.
And all these projects that we were considering this morning were listed in our GO bond election, and so they constitute our efforts to fulfill the promises we made during that election to our citizens.
Well, there, there's actually some unlisted projects in there, I know there's some for one of the, the police or fire had some unlisted projects, and there's a little bit of unlisted money, but most of the major projects are specifically listed.
All right.
Your Honor.
Yes.
Could I get somebody to, to articulate the status in this bond program for the police briefing station south of, north, excuse me, of Will Rogers Airport, now Will Rogers Airport area, and also an additional fire station?
Let me, I think it'd be better if I could get you a summary and get that back to you, but I do know that the police briefing station is in a design mode as we speak, I mean, it's not out of design, but I need to get better updates for you.
The money, the money to do that is in this bond issue, is it not?
It is.
And the money for a fire station is also in this bond issue?
That is also correct.
That's all I wanna know, thank you, sir.
Skip. In Parks and Recreation, can I get, is, is this, is this eighty-nine million that in Parks and Recreation is for a bond sale? What's, what's the, this was somewhere two thousand and seven?
It's all two thousand and seven, and, and I think eighty-nine million was the original authorization for parks, was it not, Mr. Winger?
I honestly don't know, I'm gonna have to get that for you, Mr. Kelly.
Okay.
But I can get that to you after the meeting, I just don't have that with me at the moment.
Okay. All right. Let, let me ask, just, I mean, Pat, Pat indicated all these things are listed, but there are many, many other listed projects that are not, that are gonna go later.
That's correct.
All right, so, I guess one question I would have, which I, this is not a new issue, I've raised this many, many times, why, why are we doing one-hundred-and-ninety-second Street, Pennsylvania Avenue to city limits, and ninety, one-hundred-and-ninety-second Street, May Avenue to Penn Avenue? Why is that, why does that come before, say, one-hundred-and-twenty-second Street, from Penn to Hefner, or, from May, yeah, May to.
Public Works made decisions based on an overall.
Well, I'm trying to figure out why Public Works is prioritizing those, why, like, or one-hundred-and-sixty-fourth Street, we won't do that for another couple of years.
You had the same issue last week, we moved a million dollars from one street to another street, traffic count, and, and conditioned streets had no bearing on our decision or discussion. A wanted it done, and B had some money, so we took it from B and gave it to A.
Well, I, I can give you good reasons why it's, it's in our interest to put that money on West.
In your opinion, there are good reasons.
Yes.
I think the reason.
Can you give me a reason why we would prioritize one-hundred-and-ninety-second Street over one-hundred-and-sixty-fourth Street?
Because it, it fits in an overall plan of development, that the Public Works has designed for that particular set quadrant of the city, and we've got a sequence of streets that are tied together, we have traffic signals, we have intersections that all bear into this particular decision, and so it's, it, it was not just a matter of drawing memes out of a hat kind of thing, this was part of a plan that was devised to facilitate the movement of traffic through that part of the city.
No, I, I believe it's part of a plan, I just, I'd like to see that plan and how we're, I, I just disagree with that plan. One-hundred-and-ninety-second, one-hundred-and-ninety-second Street.
You're privileged to disagree, and look at the plan, if you're not satisfied with it, you can complain about it, but we, you have one vote.
Right. Well, nobody's asked me about what, 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 what wants to go into the two thousand and twelve bond. We're gonna spend two million dollars on the Lincoln Golf House, is that, is that a higher priority than many of these other projects that aren't gonna go?
If you talk to the people at Lincoln Golf Course, it is.
But we heard, we heard from the Golf Commission that they, they want permission to raise revenue bonds, it's gonna be much more than two million, depending on how much we approve for them. Doesn't this seem a little preliminary to approve two million when we don't, they're gonna try and raise revenue bonds, we don't even know what we're, what we're building yet?
And if the two million's not enough, we won't do the project.
Well, then why put it on this year's?
Because we wanna have the bond money available if we decide to do the project.
And, and that's a higher priority than some of these other streets?
Well, Ed, by your definition, no golf course would ever have a priority over, over an interior street. I mean, you gotta do these things, that, that, that clubhouse is, what, sixty years old? Yeah, it's a, it should be a priority. And if you're gonna have golf courses, and if you're gonna have parks, you gotta take care of the infrastructure inside of them.
So, so we're gonna get the revenue bond issue straightened out in the next year? We're gonna come to an agreement on that in the next year?
Yeah, I, I can't tell you that.
That's the, that's what I'm arguing, I argue the priority of golf courses.
It is our intent to do so, there, there, the, the financial advisors are taking a look at it and trying to determine exactly what we can support from a bond issue, and with those dollars, with the bond issue dollars, we believe that we'll have a project to go forward.
Okay.
On one-hundred-and-ninety-second Street, it's, there's a lot of streets being under construction up there, and I, I understand, you know, we're trying to do some, some a year because of the amount of, of roads that need to be done in that northwest quadrant, so we're trying to pick and time those, so we don't have all the roads under construction up there at the same time, although we've been accused already of doing that from, from time to time, we're trying to, to structure those, and one of the other things that we're trying to do is coordinate that with the construction of State Highway Seventy-four that's out there, to make sure that when some of those intersections are, are broken down, which is a request that Councilman Ryan made at the, at the council meeting six months ago, I don't remember, a month ago, to try to, try to help coordinate that when State Highway Seventy-four comes into play, that we've got certain connections to, to, to provide access to the folks up there. But it's more really trying to, to, you know, get one, to get this one done, and then two years later, come back and do this one, and try to fit them all in up there, so that we, we do have, can maintain traffic flow up in that northwest, west section of town, because it's, it's, it's been impacted.
All right, how about a motion on Eight L? All right, any more comments or questions? Cast your votes. Passes eight to one. Item Eight M, I understand we do need executive session?
Yes, we do.
All right, how about a motion there? All right, cast your votes on Eight M. Passes eight one. Item Eight N, I understand we do need executive session?
Just a, just a short one, sir.
All right, about a motion there?
Yeah.
All right, cast your votes, passes unanimously. And Item Eight O, is claims recommended for denial? Has anyone asked to speak?
Yes.
All right, is anyone here wishing to speak, and are any of them listening, or Eight O, claims recommended for denial?
I, you know, I'd like to make a comment under, for Item B, the eleven-seven-hundred Quail Creek Road. I've had several conversations with the property owner out there, and I wanna compliment the municipal councilor's office, and Amy in particular, with the thoroughness they investigated every concern that the citizen had out there, assured us that the city had no liability in the issue. They did a very, very thorough job, and I do appreciate the work. The property owner, they brought up several issues, some that were germane and base, that really bore on this particular thing, some that were just ancillary to them, but I think I, I feel very comfortable now of, of supporting the denial of this claim based on the exhaustive investigation that our municipal councilor's office did.
Thank you.
Have a motion on Item Eight O.
Move, guys.
And a second, cast your votes. Claims are denied. Item Nine is the claim recommended for approval. Is anyone here wishing to speak under this item? All right, how about a motion? Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. And Ten is items from council. Pat, you wanna get us started?
You know, just a, a question, in the paper Sunday, there was a rather extensive article about AMSA billing and some of their practices, and I was wondering if we could get a brief report on how those kind of things are handled in Oklahoma City, so we don't involve a lot of collection agencies unduly in putting pressure on people, I think it was a, if the article was accurate, it was a, a sort of a.
I'm sorry, raise some questions in mind, mind, too, sir, and so we'd be happy to do that.
Thank you very much. And the other question I have, do we have a regular program for restriping streets, or we just do that on demand, basically?
We do have a rather, uh, restriping, uh, program.
Every, every, when they disappear, we can put them back in, effectively.
Well, that's, that's the plan, if you have some areas that.
Well, I'd like to see, shortly before they disappear completely, if we could.
If you have some areas we need to take, share those with me.
Thank you.
All right, Skip?
First, I would like to acknowledge the fact that we've received the, the final response from the United States Postal Service as it relates to the post office at Twenty-Fourth and MLK Martin Luther King Post Office, and it has now been announced, based upon correspondence that we received yesterday, that the effective April the second, two thousand and twelve, the Martin Luther King P.O. Box Section and Retail Services will be relocated to seven-oh-one North Kelly Avenue in Oklahoma City, and that the window service hours at the new location are Monday to Friday, eight-thirty a.m. to four-thirty p.m. And I would like to thank all the citizens in Ward Seven, there was approximately a thousand individuals that signed a petition in reference to their attempt to save the, the location at Twenty-Fourth and Martin Luther King. Unfortunately, it did not work out to the interests of the post office based upon their financial conditions of not rebuilding or building new facilities. So, to all the individuals that participated in that effort, and especially Reverend Reed and his leadership of the Northeast Ministerial Alliance in Oklahoma City, that came together with their churches and had meetings at their churches in reference to the concern of the citizens as it relates to their convenience and their needs for the, for the postal service, so, and, and last but not least, I have to acknowledge the, the diligent work of Congressman Langford's office, his staff, Ms. Emily Bruner, and the rest of his staff who participated in their efforts to communicate with the postal office and. efforts to communicate with the postal office and the postal service in trying to create a more convenient form and location for the postal service to the citizens in northeast Oklahoma City. And so, with that, we have now been given the final notice that the post office for northeast Oklahoma City will be at 7th and Kelly, and the name of the post office will be Martin Luther King Station also, so thank you. And, I have one other, two other matters, one is in reference to the press, having been a citizen of Oklahoma all my life, and in Oklahoma City, and a subscriber of the Daily Oklahman for a multitude of years, I would like to say that, from my position, that what I have witnessed here in the last month has been one of the most fantastic presentations of the historical legacy of African Americans in the state of Oklahoma and in the city of Oklahoma City. I have never witnessed the newspaper take the time to do the educational presentation that they have done this month in February, to show the richness of the history of African Americans and their contributions to the city of Oklahoma City and to the state of Oklahoma, and so I think they have to be, you know, acknowledged for the courage of stepping out and showing real history as it relates to a race of people who have been so undermined as it relates to the accomplishments and the written history and the presentation of that history, and I think it was just amazing, and also to President Henry in reference to his acknowledgement of the accomplishments of John Hope Franklin, who was one of the greatest historians that the United States have, have witnessed, and born in Rennesville, Oklahoma, and last Wednesday hung his picture at the Oklahoma State Capitol in recognition of his accomplishments, of his writings towards history and, and participating in the litigation of Ms. Ada Lord Stipule, who was the first who made history at Oklahoma University as being the first African American to enroll in law school at the University of Oklahoma, and so, to see that presentation in our city, I think gives great hope to the educational process of letting everybody know that it is just not one race, it is a multitude and a diversity of people who have worked together and, and made changes in, in the world that started in Oklahoma, and much of it started in Oklahoma City, Oklahoma, with the beginning of the, the sedion with Ms. Clara Looper and, at Katz Drug Store, so, that I want to acknowledge the press for, for their accomplishments in reference to presenting those on a weekly basis during the month of February that is now recognized as Black History Month, and I would like to ask that if the city could consider that going forth in the future, in the future years, we have such great diversity that is part of this city and is part of the city government, and I was watching, reading the paper last week where we had acknowledged the first Vietnamese lieutenant with the Oklahoma City Police Department, and I would just think that, you know, we could have a diversity month for the city of Oklahoma City, and that we could recognize the different cultures and races that our participants are part of the, the continued growth and the history of this city, and I'm just throwing, putting that out for food for thought, to, to look at it from a collective recognition of all races and cultures in the city of Oklahoma City. And last, I have been perplexed with this issue of the cell towers, and there was one on the, the agenda today that was stricken, and I have one that's coming forth in Ward 7 next week, and unless it's, unless it gets stricken, thanks to the applicant and the citizens that I've heard from, I'm just kinda confused as it relates to what the process really is, as it relates to the city council, of what is our duty to, is it, you know, I've heard people call and say, "Well, I don't want this because it's a health problem," and at the same time, I, I see one of the limitations from the federal government that states that we're not even supposed to consider the issue of health as it relates to cell towers. So I've asked Mr. Jordan if he could give us just a, a basic overview of this whole process that as we go forth with, if we happen to have to go forth with one of the hearings as it relates to cell towers.
Yes, Councilman, and I'll try to keep this as, as brief as I can, the, the federal law says it preserves the local zoning and land use authority over personal, personal cellular facilities, which would include the erection of a cellular transmission tower, however, as with many federal laws, it's, they say, "You, you can do this, but," and there are, there are six limitations on, under the federal law, on, on the power of local governments when they're making zoning decisions related to cellular telecommunications towers. First, you would look at the application, just like you would any zoning application, and, and apply your traditional zoning rationale to it as to whether or not it was good zoning or not, and, but after, after you get past that point, the six federal law limitations, there are three procedural and three substantive limitations, and the three procedural limitations are, first, your decision to deny has to be in writing, that's easy to satisfy, second, the decision to deny shall be supported by substantial evidence in a written record, so that means that essentially, if you wanted, if the council is the will of the council to deny a cellular telecommunications tower, we have to have a court reporter here to make a transcript so there can be a written record, and also, you would have to look at the land use evidence for and against the cellular cell tower, and determine whether there's substantial evidence on which you can deny it based on your land use considerations. That, that is your second procedural limitation. So you satisfy that if there are sufficient land use evidence in the record that you can base your denial on, so those are, those are both fairly simple. The third procedural limitation is you have to act on the request within a reasonable period of time, and since that's ambiguous, the FCC has, has construed that and told us what a presumptively reasonable period of time is, and that's 120, 50 days, excuse me, 150 days for non-co-location applications, and 90 days for co-locations, so in other words, if they file their application on August the 1st, the city has 150 days for it to go through the entire zoning process, and that would be the Planning Commission and the city council. Now, that, that 150 days can be extended, such as, we think, by request for continuances by the applicant, when the applicant says, "I need more time," we think, Dan and I both think that that extends the time period, that 150 days, or the parties can expressly agree that, that they're extending it, but we have to look at that very closely and, and make sure, and we're gonna, we're starting to do this, make sure that it doesn't spend too much time into Planning Commission before it gets to the city council, because you guys are making the actual decision, and you might want additional time to be able to investigate that. So that, those are the three procedural limitations that you have to adhere to under federal law, and, for example, if you, if you were to violate the 150-day or 90-day period of time, then what that means is it's, they can go straight to federal court, they don't, they don't have to wait for the council to make decision, it's, it's in effect, effect a denial of the application if you don't act within that time period. The three substantive limitations, there are two of them that are fairly easy, and I'll cover those first, you can't have unreasonable discrimination among service providers, and no cell company has ever brought that up with the city, and we, we don't think that our ordinance has any type of built-in discrimination against any providers, so that probably won't ever become an issue here, and the other one that's easy is the fact that you cannot, as Councilman Kelly mentioned, you cannot look into the, regulate the placement of these facilities based on the environmental effects of radio frequency emissions, the federal law says you flat-out cannot do that, so, those are the two easy ones, really the, the most complicated one and the key one that, that the cell companies will probably always bring up when they have these applications, is what they call the effect of prohibiting clause, and that means the federal law states that your decision shall not prohibit or have the effect, the effect of prohibiting the provision of personal wireless services. So case law has interpreted that, there's no 10th Circuit case, but a 9th Circuit case says initially the cell company has to come in and show that their site is the least intrusive means to provide the service, and what that means is they have to show that this site is the only technologically feasible site that's commercially available to them. Once they've done that, then the burden shifts to either the local government or the protestants to come back with evidence to rebut that. So essentially, as, as an example of that, in the Spud 639 case in Ward 7 that's up for next week, in the staff report, it says the Planning Commission instructed the applicant to analyze alternative sites, and the applicant submitted additional information which clarifies why this location is the only site that will accommodate the lack of service coverage, and that other locations were considered, including the National Guard Training Institute and numerous areas south of I-44. So that's the cell company coming forward with that evidence to show you that, well, this is really our only site that's commercially available to us, only technologically feasible site. So since they put that evidence in the record, the city or protestants essentially have to come back with evidence to rebut that, because otherwise, no matter how sound your land use reasons are for denying it, if they show this is the only technological, technologically feasible site that's commercially available to them, if you don't rebut that, they're gonna win when it goes to federal court. So, and, and that, that's kind of a, about as brief a summary as I can do on the federal law in this, there are scores of cases over the last 10 years on this federal law.
Can you, what, would you define for me, or a roughly, commercial available?
Uh, Dan and I think it means what they can lease at a reasonable commercial rate.
And we, we are charged with interpreting whether it's a reasonable commercial rate or not?
Once that, yes, exactly.
Sorry, I mean, I was listening to all that. We've spoken a lot today about cultural facilities, and I just wanna remind everybody that our fabulous Oklahoma City Museum of Art is getting ready to celebrate its 10th anniversary. It just doesn't seem possible that 10 years has gone by, but March 16th is the actual date, and I believe they're having a free weekend, I know we'll hear a lot more about it, but I just wanna encourage everybody to kind of think of that important date. Many people seem to forget that that museum is a completely private effort, it wasn't part of MAPS, and it was, you know, we accomplished a lot of things with it, we saved the Center Theater, you know, we have an absolutely amazing cultural facility downtown, and I just wanna remember Carolyn Hill, I guess, for a minute, who led the charge to cause the relocation of the museum and saving of that building, and then recognize Clinch and Tila, who's done a fabulous job stepping into Carolyn's footsteps, it's, it's a true treasure for our city, and I hope everybody will take the opportunity to enjoy it.
Thank you, Your Honor. Last week, we, I had the pleasure of meeting with the superintendent of Moore Public School, Mrs. Pierce, and I think we're going to be able to work a little bit closer together. That school district just continues to grow, they're averaging well over 500, an increase of over 500 students each year, that's enough to build a new elementary school each year, which is basically what they've been doing, and they've got a couple more online. What happens with all this growth is, especially around elementary schools, sometimes we encounter traffic problems as parents line up to drop their students off and pick them up, and so we're working with, hopefully, for some better plans going forward with that school district, and they're doing a great job out there. I also had the pleasure of meeting with Rod Phillips, and we truly have a treasure in Ward 5, that's the Baptist Children's Home, and was able to take a tour of that facility. I need to say this carefully, those children, even though they're experiencing some very difficult times, they are the ones truly blessed who are able to end up there at the Baptist Children's Home, as well as some single mothers, so it's a great facility, and Rod's doing a great job out there. Finally, running the risk of pushing this comments section past noon, I have heard some comments from citizens in Ward 5 about their concerns for the bicentennial park, and I hope that we will be able to implement those concerns. A lot of it deals with the historic nature of the park, and speaking with our city's engineer, we can still accommodate those concerns, even though the contract may have been approved, change orders can continue to be made to that, and the statutes that some people are concerned about, I think we can certainly accommodate those with those four rows of trees and flowers, those can be planted there, although, on one hand, they do seem kinda diverse, Wiley Post, Tom Stafford and Stanley Draper, Stanley really is the one who's most closely recognized with Oklahoma City, the other two certainly are, are great treasures of the state of Oklahoma, but I'd like to see that park increase in its historical perspective as it relates to Oklahoma City, and again, with those four rows of trees and flowers, perhaps we can put likeness of individuals, at least a headshot, along with a plaque describing their life, and, and it would go all the way back to Charles Colcord, the first police chief, first sheriff of Oklahoma City, William Couch, the city's first mayor, and then some of the more well-known mayors, Mr. Oberhoser, as well as some business leaders, Senator Kerr, Mr. McGee, and also, from a social perspective, Skip, as you've mentioned, with February being Black History Month, I would say Clara Looper certainly needs a place over there, and other individuals that, along with her, that really helped the city to become more progressive, more open, more diverse, a much more friendlier city, and I think we can accomplish that with the renovations, perhaps that just hasn't received the attention that it deserves, but I would certainly hope we can include those kinds of ideas as the progress with the park moves forward, and, and then the other comment that I hear is concerning the trees, and all I can say is, it looks like those trees are going to be lost, the current ones, but we will be replacing just as many, if not more, trees of a size that, when they're added, will be very pleasant, 23 to 26 feet in height, so we, we're gonna take advantage of that, and again, the thing I'm also pleased to hear is 25 park benches, currently there's none, and it's just going to be a more user-friendly park, I anticipate. So, my main reason for these comments is to just let citizens know that their comments are important, we do listen to them, and we do try to work with those comments when, when we can. Thank you.
I had a very confrontational neighborhood meeting last night, probably the most uncivil neighborhood meeting I've ever attended, which may be a sign of the times, I think, but one of the things that was mentioned, and I think might have resolved some of the problems, is if we had a different notification requirement for the rezoning in, in agricultural land, the way it works is, for many of our rezoning applications in agriculture... land, the way it works is, for many of our rezoning applications in agricultural land, don't contact enough people to make a, to make it really, it legally complies with the notice requirement, but it doesn't really comply with anyone's definition of what notice ought to be. I mean, in this particular case, there were, the city was the main person that received the notice, and the city was the applicant. So I would like to see this change. I think we've done it in some other areas where you just extend the circle of notice until you reach a given number of individuals to be notified. I can't remember what that is, but I'd like to have the planning commission just take a look at that. Bring an ordinance that would, that would at least ensure that some people other than the applicant get notice based on the requirement.
We could draft, we could draft you an ordinance that you could then refer to the planning commission if you want.
Which way would work, but I'd like to.
I think that's really easy, because in some of the agricultural areas, you could go a distance and notify just a property owned a section, for instance, and the people adjacent to that wouldn't get noticed. So I think that's a really good point. Run into that problem a couple of times in order.
It would have made a lot different in this case. It might not have made an ultimate difference in the decision that the council and the water trust and the planning commission would have made, but those, the degree of protest or the intensity of the protest would certainly have been known earlier. And we just need to find some way to make sure we do a better job of notifying people. So that's it.
We'll draft something and bring back to you.
Have we ever considered a sign on the property? I know in certain communities, they put a sign, this project is to be rezoned from X to Z or something like that. Would that be helpful?
It could be, and it is done in other communities. I don't think it would be in, on this case, because nobody drives past where this one was, but I, that's something that hasn't been done in other communities.
We looked at that, I mean, this, in the early 80s, late 70s, we looked at that thing when I was on the planning commission, and the conclusion was that it may, as Jim points out, in a very dense area, it may do something. But overall, it doesn't necessarily have much impact. The better notice, I think, is, is that you actually put something in people's hands, that they actually get a letter from the city, or from the applicant, or whomever is responsible for that. But I think we've done it in some area, where you, where we just expand the circle or expand the perimeter to, to we have to reach X number of people. I don't know what that X is.
I don't know what the provision on that said, but there is some provision that if you don't reach a certain number of people, that you keep going out the distance as necessary to get it. I believe it's 15, but we'll check, I'll check with JJ.
That would have been, that would have certainly changed. At least it would accelerated the time that we had the meeting last night. I'm not sure it would change the outcome, but it was a, it was a very, very.
This is in Outer Draper Reservoir, in the West Elm Creek area, and it's a clay pigeon shooting area that's on water trust land, and some of the neighbors are expressing concerns. Environmental concerns, some of it, but most of it's about.
It's about noise, it's about noise, man. It's, you know, it, one of those kind of things where you, they are so passionate about wanting it not to be there that the Lessee was extremely interested in trying to work out something, and it took like an hour and a half before the shouting died down enough that he could even make a proposal to offer to close the business on Sunday, which is one of his good days. I mean, it just wasn't a, it just, you know, I think that may be a sign of the times. All they lacked was a bunch of signs saying government is bad, or whatever you would put on signs like that.
Thank you, Your Honor. Jim, if you will, pass along to Chief City to pass along my extreme thanks to Master Sergeant Burkine, who's the Community Relations Officer for the Santa Fe Division. The sergeant and I had the privilege of attending the first homeowners association meeting for the Avalon Creek area out in far southwest Oklahoma City. The meeting was very, very well put together by the officials, the officers of Avalon Creek, and the sergeant did an excellent job of giving them the commitment that our police have to serve the public and making himself available to try to get involved in any situation that he could. And so that was a very, very positive meeting. I'd like to thank the people who, over the last couple of weeks, have contacted me concerning the bicentennial park. One thing, Jim, correct me if I'm wrong, because I've been telling people this, that every piece of artwork or historical memorabilia that is in the park today has been inventoried, that it'll have to be moved and stored off-site temporarily while the park is being redone, that the Arts Council, which is made up of citizens who will take input from other interested people, will be making a determination, and so that every piece of memorabilia that's taken out of the park will be placed somewhere at a city facility for the public to see. Is that, am I undercorrected?
That is correct, sir.
Okay. So I think if you're concerned about that, I think there's a tremendous emphasis that's going to be made to make sure that this, like Stanley Draper, like Stafford, and these other artifacts, will be stored to preserve our history and to recognize the fact that I did not realize until we got into this, that this area between the civic center, City Hall, and the county courthouse is extremely historically important to the history of Oklahoma City. And I think every effort, from what I heard, we vetted this very, in much detail at the Economic Development Trust last week. The people who were involved in the planning of this were very, very conscious of that meeting, of preserving that sacred historical presence of the area. So I think the public is going to be very well pleased once all is said and done, when the park is renovated. Thank you, Your Honor.
Larry, could I make just a quick name correction? It's not the Arts Council, it's the Oklahoma City Arts Commission.
The Oklahoma City Arts Commission.
Commission.
To a guy from New Jersey, it's the Arts Council. I apologize. Thank you very much.
I just don't want to.
Right there.
Peter DeLisi was just very nervous that he had to take care of all that artwork.
Well, that's real important to the gentleman, two seats down from him, because he's chairman of the Arts Council, not the Arts Commission.
Okay, so the organization that is going to be heading this up is the?
Oklahoma City Arts Commission.
Oklahoma City Arts Commission.
Let me make a reference, and by the way, it is, I think we can clearly anticipate that some of those pieces will be going back into bicentennial park.
My final thoughts on Project 180 and the bicentennial park. We have got to move towards maximum openness, transparency, and public deliberation. In that regard, Project 180 is, we have failed, in my opinion. I don't think that you should be concerned, the public should be concerned in any way by discord or people asking tough questions or discord among the council. The council is really the last resistance or counterbalance. We have an unusual situation in Project 180. It's different than MAPS. You think about all the deliberation, all the committees, everything that goes into MAPS III. Project 180 is way over $100 million. It's, but you don't have anything, it's maybe 20% of MAPS III, but you certainly don't have the same amount of public deliberation, transparency, and openness. It's borrowed money. What made us the envy of other cities is that we collected the money first, then we built $130 million parks. We're building bicentennial park, we just got fleeced on these architectural and design fleas with borrowed money. The cost of a taxpayer for bicentennial park, 5.5% 20-year note, that's $30,000 a month that the taxpayer is going to pay for bicentennial park, so I hope we use it. But the process is fundamentally flawed, and we hear, we've learned some things. It has to stop here. The process has to be revised. We have, we have a city manager, who's the longest sitting city manager in the city's history. Nobody's ever been city manager that long. City staff is very capable, but I don't see them really contesting city manager. Mayor has a lot, very popular across the country, is out of town a high percentage of time. The council is, needs to be the counterbalance, and it hasn't been for two reasons. One, we haven't been given adequate information. We should not be having to pull this information out like we have. The presentations to council have been inadequate, and the answers we've been given were inaccurate. The answers that have been given publicly on this horseshoe that we had a contractual obligation to do bicentennial park are simply not true. So we haven't been given adequate information, and we're just not, we're just not aggressive enough as a counterbalance, and we've got to, we've got to as a council. That's it.
City manager report?
Yes, Your Honor. First of all, we have Mike Carrier from the Commission of Visitors Bureau to give us a update, quarterly update.
Thank you, Mr. Couch, mayor, council. Good to see you again. We have had a good first half of our year. Business continues to be strong here in Oklahoma City. We are ahead of pace in terms of the tax collections, which is one of the consistent measures that we are able to use in terms of looking at our hospitality industry. We continue to see good growth in visitors coming to Oklahoma City. We also see good growth in the leads that we are generating. We have not booked as much business through the first half of the year, which is not necessarily an anomaly. A lot of this is timing issues that you deal with and people making decisions, but we are on pace to have another successful year. We went through the first half of the year with, obviously, the major equine events that take place particularly during the second quarter. Again, a very successful year. The shows were at least where they had been before, if not up in most cases. We have gotten some excellent reviews from them. If you have, while, I know Tim gives you updates on State Fair. If you have not been out there lately and seen the big hole between Barnes III and 5A, we're in the final stages of the work that will be done in the, in the equine area, and I can tell you that our horse show clients are very excited to see that happening. They are very pleased with that work, and it continues to elevate our position as being a premier equine venue in the United States and around the world. Anecdotally, it was very interesting during the reigning horse futurity, the night that they had the open shootout, which was a special event during the, during the futurity, my wife and I and a couple of other folks went to the cafe for the draw party to see who was going to ride at what point during the evening. I think we were about five of the six people in there that could speak English. Everybody else, it was amazing, German, Italian, Portuguese. There were people there from Brazil, Argentina, Italy, Germany, Austria. It is truly a tremendous international draw that brings these folks to Oklahoma City on an annual basis, so we're very pleased with that. We've also had the opportunity to work with some of our friends out in the Adventure District to do some planning for some things they are looking at, and so we're very pleased with where we are and things that are moving forward. Appreciate your continued support. I know, I believe Councilwoman Salyer is going to join us for lunch Friday for a few minutes at least to welcome some folks. We have the 2013 National Square Dance Convention. We'll be here in June next year. Their National Executive Committee is in town this week as part of their planning process, and she'll be there to greet them on Friday for a few minutes as we have lunch with those folks.
I'm encouraging the rest of the council to come join me in a couple of do-si-dos, I think.
I'll certainly come if you're going to square dance, Mike. I believe one of the commitments the mayor made when we solicited this group was that he would try to get the council to all learn to square dance so they could come at some time during the 2013 convention and participate at least for a few minutes, so, but we're excited about that. So be happy to answer any questions, but we are, we're pleased with the year we're having. We think there's some continued good things ahead of us.
Any leads on a hotel in the Adventure District?
As a matter of fact, we've been working with the Chickasaw Nation for several months now in terms of their desire to have a hotel there at Remington Park. Deborah Youngblood is leading the effort on behalf of the Chickasaw Nation. Kathy O'Connor has been in some of those meetings, and a number of other people from the Adventure District area. We think that there is a good prospect that there will be a hotel started before the end of this year. We know that that is a definite opportunity. Also, as you hopefully are aware, one of our better developers here in the, in the community has purchased the Lincoln Plaza. And within the last three weeks, I've had conversations with three different hotel operating companies that have come into the city to visit with him in regards to the renovation of that property and reopening it as a, as a first-class hotel. So there's movement in that area, and over the past 18 months to two years, there have probably been a half a dozen others that have looked at the northeast area of the city and just have not come to fruition yet. But I think we'll definitely see some things happening out there. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
We also have a presentation this morning on our semi-annual report, our mid-year report, performance report, and leading for results, and Jason Farré-Rush is here this morning to lead us through that. Doug Dollar is going to pass out the copies of the presentation. Jason?
Yes, sir. Good morning, Mayor and Council. Appreciate the opportunity this morning to talk with you a little bit about our 2012 Leading for Results Midyear Performance Report. The report that you have in your packet this morning looks like this, and it's divided into two sections. The, the first section provides a review and discussion of some of the selected measures from department strategic business plans. And the measures that we chose to include in that discussions, discussion section are key measures that departments have identified as really being the most important performance measures to them as far as demonstrating the service level that they're providing to citizens. The second half of the report really is more or less a table of additional result and output measures that you'll find in department programs. That's more of a reference section, really. And then in the presentation this morning, we've got just a handful of the frontline departments that we're going to highlight. We'll look at a couple of performance measures from each of those departments, and I know we're running a little bit late here this morning during the meeting, so I'll try to get through those as quickly as I can. I'll probably end up skipping a few of them, but if I pass a slide that you're interested in, by all means, stop me, and I'll be glad to share the information with you. As far as looking at the report goes, in the discussion section of the report, you'll notice it's organized by department in alphabetical order. What I have up here on the screen is kind of an example from the report. You'll notice that each department has a department mission. The key measures are organized by line of business and program. We've included a table that will actually give you kind of the current year estimate of where we, you know, expect to finish, and then also previous year's actuals and the current year target. That way you can kind of do some comparison if you choose to do so. And then underneath that table, you'll find just a brief discussion. We've tried to identify why the measure is important. After all, we are, you know, it does take resources to collect and report this data, so we want to convey why the measure is important, and then a brief explanation of what these numbers are telling us. Notice here on this example, I've circled the line of business and program, because I wanted to point out to city council that if you are going through this report, and for example, in this case, you're interested in what else the department is measuring and setting goals for in the code inspections program, that's really where the second half of report kind of comes into play. That's that reference section. Here's an example of that reference section of the report, and it's also organized by department, line of business, and program. And so notice I've got on the screen here, circled the measure we were just looking at in that discussion section, but again, if you're interested in other measures that are in the code inspection program, you can see they also look at kind of what they're doing in the areas of proactive inspections, they track the number of total complaint-based inspections, and then also you'll see another program in code enforcement that relates just to nuisance abatement. There's some measures in there about citizen satisfaction, code violations resolved voluntarily. So the back half of the report has a lot of additional data for you. I will point out that over on the far right, we have performance indicators that compare the current year estimate to the current year target, and just as a reminder, those indicators really are there just to, not necessarily to say whether performance is good or bad, really they're there to help us quickly scan through the report and just kind of identify those measures that we probably should stop and look at and ask a few questions about. So with that in mind, I'll go ahead and, like I said, run through some of the performance measures from some of the frontline departments, and please stop me if I skip one that you're interested in. This first measure we're looking at comes from the municipal court and looks at the percent of war. percent of warrants cleared. And just to give you an idea, kind of the workload that's generated in terms of warrants, through the first six months, the court has received about 26,000 warrants. That's about 3,600 more than what they received the last six months of the prior fiscal year. So they've seen a little bit of increase, obviously, in the warrants that are coming in. The clearance rate so far through this year is 81 percent. That's within target, but down from where we finished last year. And one thing to point out about this measure is that if you look at the history, you go back and look over a couple of years, you'll notice the second half of the year, for some reason, we really seem to gain ground on clearing warrants. So there's a good chance that by the time this year wraps up, we'll be higher than that 81 percent, but based on the current trend, that's where we're projecting. Then I'll go ahead and skip ahead a couple and look at a measure that comes from the Utilities Department. This is in line maintenance, and we're looking at the percent of work orders that are completed in 72 hours. That's their goal for repairing water service lines, water main breaks, those kinds of things. And when you look at the performance over the last, you know, three years, you can see the staff's done a really a pretty good job of being consistent in completing these work orders in that 72-hour window. What's interesting, though, is if you drop in the actual work orders that have been performed, you notice here that in this current year, we've seen a substantial increase in workload. I believe they've actually repaired about 3,064, or I should say addressed 3,064 work orders this year compared to, you know, roughly 4,000 in total the previous years. And that really goes back to the drought we had this summer where we experienced, you know, basically record numbers of water main breaks. So, you know, really the takeaway here from this slide is although we had a lot more line breaks, from a citizen's perspective, the turnaround time in getting those repaired really remained pretty consistent with what we've been able to do in previous years. So that speaks, you know, pretty highly of the line maintenance staff and talking with utilities. I know they've mentioned that, you know, they feel like their staff really went above and beyond. We put in a lot of extra time, and you can see that here in the data.
Excuse me, and I think many of the citizens, especially out in Ward 5, recognize that. So it was difficult to work through that process, but whenever I'd go to a homeowners meeting, I would often hear just so many compliments for the men and women who were working with that and coming out very late at night to repairing the water. So it was well noticed by the citizens.
We'll look over here. Next department we have is Public Works, and the measure we'll look at this morning really examines the amount of permanent utility cut repairs that we're able to perform in 30 days. What happens with those water repairs that we were talking about, when utilities line maintenance goes out and they repair a water line or a water main, and they have to, you know, tear up a street or a sidewalk or something like that to do the repair, those things are temporarily repaired until we can get a crew out to permanently fix those. And that's what this measure looks at. It looks at how many of those type of repairs we're able to permanently fix within 30 days. And as you can see, it's been an area that we've struggled with a little bit over the last couple of years, but then when you add in, again, the record number of main breaks that we experienced this summer, it's really impacted our ability to get those done in 30 days. We're actually accomplishing about 10 percent of those in 30 days through the first six months of this year. And again, if you drop the, you know, the volume of repairs in, the graph is very similar to what we saw in line maintenance, where although we're not getting as many of them done in 30 days, we've certainly completed a lot more permanent cut utility repairs this year. Now, Public Works is the ones that, you know, basically manage this contract, and they've recently awarded a couple of additional contracts to help try to catch up on this backlog, and I believe they're looking at adding another one as well. So hopefully by the end of the year, we'll see a little bit improvement in this area. Yes, sir.
Put that slide back for just a minute. Maybe my math is... I wasn't too good in math in college, okay? You've got 1,316 instances this year that had to be dealt with?
Yeah, what that graph is, that's an estimate.
Of how many?
Of... That's an estimate of how many we will end... We will be at by the end of the year. So it basically takes the 658 that we've completed so far this year through six months and just kind of trends that out. So we're estimating to complete a total of 1,300 permanent utility cut repairs.
Okay. Thank you.
So in the Police Department, I thought we might take a look at the traffic, a measure from the Traffic Safety Program. And this is, really looks at the traffic contacts that Oklahoma City Police Department makes. Excuse me, let me get caught up here. And really, the thing is, is traffic contacts will control or help control traffic collisions. And so it's no surprise that this is an area that the Police Department emphasizes. And if you look at the first six months of this year, that emphasis is really clear in that we're averaging, or I'm sorry, we're on pace to do a total of 172 traffic contacts per 1,000 residents. And that's an increase over what we've seen the last two years and obviously slightly ahead of what the department had targeted. And again, keeping in mind, you know, the goal of traffic contacts is to help control traffic collisions. If you drop the traffic collision rate per 1,000 citizens in over this same time period, you can see that it's remained relatively stable. In fact, we're down just a little bit through the first six months of this year than we were back in FY10. So just wanted to kind of point this out as where the contacts are certainly at least helping maintain our traffic collisions where they are. When you think about the fact that Oklahoma City is growing, communities around us are growing, there's probably a strong likelihood that there's more, you know, trucks and cars on our streets today than there were two years ago. This is really a pretty good trend in that respect. Looking at the Fire Department, we'll take a quick look at one of their response time measures. And this particular measure looks at their ability to respond to emergency calls within six minutes 70 percent of the time. And this measure here looks at all calls, whether it's emergency medical, whether it's fire, basically any type of emergency response they go on. And so it's really a pretty good indicator of overall response time. When you look at it, basically the target here is 70 percent, but over the last three years, you can see just some steady incremental performance... Or I'm sorry, some steady incremental improvement. And when you drop in the number... Excuse me. When you drop in the number of calls over that same time period, you can see that that has actually grown pretty significantly. We're actually on pace to respond to about 2,000 more calls this year than what we did the previous year. So again, just kind of an illustration of the Fire Department certainly responding, at least in terms of maintaining that six-minute window despite what we would call a significantly increase, significant increase in workload.
Excuse me, one more comment. With the new, or the conversion, or the coordination of the 99911 response to the Fire Department with IMSA, that number of calls should dramatically drop from 82,000. Is that correct, Jim?
We're working toward that end.
Okay. And has that conversion or...
No.
Okay. But it's soon. It's on the horizon.
We're working on it. I mean, I saw an email on it last week, and there's still some work to do on the computer side of things.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. So the next measure we'll look at comes from the Public Transportation Parking Department. It's the number of passengers per service hour. This is one that we've looked at in the past during these type of presentations. And really, I just wanted to include it again this morning to point out that passengers per service hour continue to increase. And just to let Council know that this data does reflect the increased frequency that we've added to a couple of routes earlier this year. So when you think about that, we've actually increased the number of service hours, and yet our passengers per hour are still going up. So a good trend over in the bus operations program. Here's one we'll look at from Parks and Rec. Actually, I'll skip ahead to this... Go ahead and skip ahead to this satisfaction measure, because this is actually a measure that's derived from asking citizens, you know, how satisfied they are with some of the general recreation programs. And Parks does a real good job of surveying. They do a lot of surveying with the Civic Center. They do surveying with the seniors. And in this case, they survey the participants at the General Rec Centers, and they actually do about 1,000 surveys every year. So that's where these numbers come from. And through the first half of this year, the satisfaction rates with the General Rec Centers are averaging about 92 percent. That's about 9 percent higher than where we finished last year. When I asked the department, you know, if there's anything operationally, you know, that they had changed to kind of influence that, they mentioned they've really been putting some emphasis on customer service. They said they've really been emphasizing cleanliness. So at least, you know, those two areas could at least be influencing the satisfaction rate. There could be other reasons. And then the last measure we'll look at comes from Development Services, and this is the percent of construction-related inspections that we're able to complete within two days. And this is a measure, again, that we've looked at two or three times during these presentations, so I wanted to make sure we provided an update of where we are. Through the first half of this year, you can see we're doing about 5 percent better than how we finished last year in terms of completing these construction inspections in two days. That's still short of our target, but again, this is one where when you drop in the actual workload of the program or the number of inspection requests that they're, you know, they're fielding now, you can see that there's been a pretty significant increase in the number of inspections that they're doing. We've actually done about 46,000 inspection requests this year. That's about 15 percent higher than where we were during the first six months of last year. So again, just to point out, it's a significant increase in workload, but at the same time, we've been able to improve the service level by about 5 percent. One of the things the department, you know, attributes to being able to accomplish that is during this reporting period, they had all of their inspector positions filled. And that's something we've had a little bit of difficulty doing over the last couple of years. So those positions were filled along with two additional inspectors that were added. So that's at least helped us address some of this increase in workload.
That's actually a result that I monitor weekly. Bob Teener sends me an email every week as to what... And so I do watch it very closely on that, and it has gotten much better over the last six, eight weeks on that. So anyway, this is summary of some of the items that are out there that we just highlighted. It's a much more comprehensive report that's out there, and if you've got any questions, we'd be happy to sit down and go over any of the specific performance indicators with you.
May I make one final comment? We see the number of instances growing, whether it's police responding to calls or Fire Department or inspections, which is all good. I think the city's growing. As we get closer to working on the budget, it just has to draw the conclusion that we probably need more people. We're growing. The city's growing, and the personnel needs to grow, and we probably need to take that into consideration when we do get closer to the budget. Thank you.
City Manager reports? All right. We have executive session. We'll be back.